Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we're gonna start off with a short prayer. Please rise with me. Yes, thank you Father, once again for all your many blessings. Thank you for this council today. Give us wisdom, give myself wisdom. Thank you for the residents. Keep our, all our employees safe today in your name, Father. Amen. All right, we have agenda in front of us. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, administration is recommending three additions to the agenda. Seven point two point three, the Riverhurst bin site. Seven point three point nine, C two funding request. And seven point five point three, cold mix tender.
Thank you. I'll need a motion. Thank you, Counselor Gravey. With the amendments, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. I need a motion to adopt the minutes of regular meeting of council. March ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes from previous council.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slupczek. That council approves adoption of the minutes of March ninth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, on to new business. Seven point one, notice of motion. There is none, sorry. Seven point two, environment. None for that, seven point two. So, we go to seven point two one.
Mr. Reeve and members of council, seven point two point one, it's the purchase of replacement tractors for the mowing program, and I'll turn the podium over to Acting General Manager, Mr. Louis Gandolfi.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
On January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, administration put out a tender on the Alberta purchasing connection, as well as the MD website for the purchase of two tractors for the roadside mowing program. These tractors are currently in the equipment replacement program and are due for replacement in two thousand twenty-two. Administration received four tenders. A comparison analysis was completed by administration on seven available models with minimum requirements of HP, sorry, horsepower of one sixty-five and a PTO of one twenty-five. Sale at auction of these units, we are replacing was considered but found to be less profitable than simply trading the old tractors in. The funding for this purchase is through the equipment replacement program, so no new funds are required. And administration is recommending that council approve the purchase of two Massey MF sixty, excuse me, MF six S one sixty-five tractors in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, less the trade-in value of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to be funded through the equipment replacement fund. We have council options of approving this purchase as stated. That council deny the purchase of the two Massey MF six S tractors as presented, and that council direct administration to bring additional information back regarding the purchase of the replacement tractors for the roadside mowing program.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve, option one.
Okay, there's a motion. Any discussion? I just have some, do we have any more footage on this, or what the other tractors were, or how much they were, and do we have any of that with us?
We do. We had a minimum spec that we were looking to have that satisfied, and we had that satisfied through the spec, through the tender process, so we did meet our minimum standards. We do have information, but we don't have it here for council to consider at the moment.
Did you take in consideration what the tractor's resale value is after?
Dennis? Yes, we did, thank you. I just got the manager of ag services here as well, so she's got some information. Do you want to come up in case there's any further questions, please?
It's hard to make a decision when you don't have the, everything in front of you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we did take into account the treat-in value, and we feel that this is still our best decision.
So after this, what, these other tractors are at how many, how many hours on them, the ones that we're trading in?
The one tractor has sixty-three hundred and forty-four hours, and the second tractor has sixty-six hundred and eighty-two. One of the tractors has been, we've been having mechanical problems for two years with it.
Okay, it's just these Masseys that you're buying, did you look at what they, that's what I mean more, is if we're gonna buy two Masseys, what are they gonna be worth in five, six years from now? That's, that trade-in?
I don't think it'll be a big difference. The green tractors absolutely hold a better value.
Yes.
But the difference in cost, I think this is still a better.
Still better, no, okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Reeve, just saw, for council, do we know how many, how many mowing tractors we actually have? Or we have none? If we buy these, we'll have two? Is that?
We have four.
We have, we will have four, or we do have?
We do have four.
We do have four?
Yes.
And then we're selling two of them, though, or then we'll have four again?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You want to say something, Mike? Any other discussion? Yeah?
So, Mr. Reeve, just a few more details for council, so the, there was one, two, three, four, five, there was seven units that, that bid, or seven other tractors that were in the running. And the, the, in particular, the question, we ended up with the Masseys at a price after trade-in at a hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. New Holland was one twenty-five, that was for a T six one seventy-five, a T seven two-ten was one fifty-eight. Fent five sixteen was one fifty-two-five, John Deere sixty-one forty was one twenty-three-seven. A John Deere sixty-one forty, there was another one at, at a hundred and eleven eight twenty, and the John Deere six R one forty-five at a hundred and fifty-five. The Massey was the cheapest of all of them and did meet the requirement. And I'm just, there was a question that I had the other day, did the Massey also come with a bucket?
No bucket.
Okay, no bucket, okay. So, the Massey was, was almost five thousand dollars cheaper than the cheapest John Deere, and at, and forty-five thousand cheaper than the most expensive John Deere.
It's just that I'm in this, in that business, and if I'm, if I'm buying a tractor, there's nothing wrong with Masseys or any of them, but your resale value on a John Deere or a New Holland far exceeds the Massey right now. So I'm just, if we buy these, it's just, what are we gonna get for them in, you know, four or five years from now? Because they, they don't have very good value when they're, when you're re-trading them in, right? So that's, that's my only concern here. You, you save a little bit now buying that, but then you're really gonna have a hit in five, six years from now, so that's just... Any other discussion?
Yeah, do we, do we need these tractors right away, or is it something that we can get administration to bring back the information on that, what you're asking?
The delivery of any of these tractors won't be until probably January anyway.
Of next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we still have a motion on the table. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess I do have that question, and if we're waiting till January, are you, do you have enough concern that you maybe wanna take a look at those other ones?
Well, I'm just, I got my farmer hat on right now.
I know.
And I know.
Well, it's probably a good hat, but I'm just...
If you, if you're buying trucks or anything, or, you know, there's a lot of things that people specialize in, and this is just tractors right now, and, you know, I just, I'm concerned about the resale value after, but...
Okay, I'll just ask then, if we don't pass this motion, we can make the third motion there, that we ask admin for more info, and come back that way?
You can, yeah. Yes, Counselor Fadav?
So if we delay this, and just kind of keep moving along, is that gonna get us out of the queue that we're in now? Because I know there's a lot of drastic supply issues that are going on. If we wait another month to decide, is that gonna put us to the back of the list again, and now the January delivery won't be happening till August? Just a question.
Through the Reeve, I think that's a really good question, and my other concern with, with putting it off is that they won't hold this pricing for us. It may change.
It will change.
Oh, it'll, it'll change for sure.
Oh, yeah, with everything going on, right?
Because these were, yeah, go ahead, Marson.
Yeah, I'm not much of a tractor guy either, but, so what are you, what are we selling? What kind are we selling there?
John Deeres.
Yeah, so, and then, I don't know, is there anything to worry about with maintenance? Like, do the John Deeres just last longer than the Masseys, or how does that? I mean, for five thousand dollars, that's like...
It's a tough, it's just your resale, like a John Deere at auction sale, or a Massey, if they're the exact same tractor, everyone in the crowd's gonna buy the John Deere over the Massey, unless you're like a, but, just a, just an ordinary tractor buyer, he's gonna buy the Massey. Like, some farmers love Masseys, next guy loves John Deeres. This is like Ford Shev thing, but I'm just telling you overall, that your John Deere will sell better when you resell. And I agree with Counselor Fadav, we can't, we can't be waiting either, because the prices, everybody knows the prices are going up as we speak, everything. It's just, it's crazy, you know? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Through, Mr. Reeve and to members of council, just, just a quick reminder that this was done through a, through a tender, because it exceeded the seventy-five thousand dollar through the Northwest Trade Alliance. And as a result, the tender rules are slightly different than just normal purchasing. We are very clear in this tender, when I look at the sheet, as to what the specifications of the tractor had to be. Nowhere in our specification, and I'm not even sure how we would forecast trade-in value of, of the new piece of equipment, but we, we potentially run the risk of being in a legal liability situation by accepting a tractor that wasn't the lowest, who did meet all of the specifications. And I'm not sure that would be an interesting question for legal. We, although our tender does say we, not necessarily to accept the lowest, the lowest bid not necessarily accepted, the question still remains is, is all of the tractors that were quoted all met spec? And because they all met spec, unless we had some future ability to forecast trade-in, I don't know how we even put that in a specification, but, but they all met spec, and typically if they all met spec, the lowest tender would win the award, and to not award it to the lowest tender who met spec may be an interesting, we might be challenged on the tender, on the tender award.
Mr. Reeve?
Thank you. So why do we put that clause in then? Lowest tender not necessarily accepted?
Those typically are reserved for, did they not meet something particularly, and it's a, it's a standard tender document, you know, say in a construction project, maybe somebody didn't have their WCB, maybe they didn't have their core, their safety, their occupational safety, so that is the clause that allows us, if somebody did not meet all of the requirements, we could still accept them if we wanted to, but we might not have to. In this case, it's pretty cut and dried with a piece of equipment that met the spec. If it didn't meet a hydraulic spec, or didn't meet a horsepower rating, then, then it would be a much easier decision. But because this, because the tender is complete in, in its, they, they met all of the specifications we asked for, and it's the lowest bid, it, it would be, we potentially could have the tender challenge because we did not accept the lowest qualified bid. It is a qualified bid.
Mr. Reeve, just, we're replacing John Deeres, I'm just curious, how long did they last?
They run a ten-year replacement program, and they're right around the seven thousand hours, and that's generally when you'll start to see some mechanical repairs having to happen.
So, they're on a John Deere replacement program? Do we not have to replace them?
Our replacement.
Our replacement program, okay.
Just a replacement program, it had nothing to do with the...
And so then that, you know, if we kind of track that, the Masseys, you hope will last ten years too then, right? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, guys, great job.
Thank you.
What's that?
Good discussion.
Yes. Onto seven two point two.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This relates to the Bylaw one seven nine six, which is a speed rate bylaw. MD Council adopted a speed limit policy on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, giving administration direction to collect current speed limits throughout the municipality. The data collected showed there was an opportunity to change speed limits in various subdivisions of roads throughout the MD. On July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, council approved the speed limit review recommendations and direct administration to update the associated municipal bylaws. These changes focus on speed reductions throughout, most of the, excuse me, speed reductions throughout most MD hamlet subdivisions and certain roads, while other roads saw speeds increase. Bylaw one seven nine six was presented to council and received first reading on February twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two, with additional direction to remove section twenty-three from the attached Schedule A. Administration has made the requested revision to Schedule A, attached to and forming part of Bylaw one seven nine six as directed by council, and are now requesting second and third reading of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion for a second? Thank you, Counselor Gravey. He makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen ninety-six being a bylaw of the MD of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to regulate the rate of speed on highways under the direction, control, and management of the municipality, to be given second reading. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes?
So I thought that number twenty-three was coming out. That's what we decided, first reading, right?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Scarsen, yes, that's correct, it is to come out. I don't have the attachment open on my screen here, but is there...
Well, I mean, it's just, it's included in here unless it's...
Counselor Scarsen, can you define what you meant by number twenty-three?
Well, it's just the one that's labeled number twenty-three, Township Road six oh four A, between Range Road four seventy and four seventy-one, Eastbourne.
And that's appendix, which appendix was that one?
I was just reading the bylaw. Yeah.
Appendix A.
Appendix B.
I'm just, I'm just looking at Appendix B here, sorry.
Twenty-two was gonna stay in, and twenty-three was gonna come out.
Appendix, Appendix A twenty-three.
Mr. Reeve? It's up on the screen, Louis.
Oh, thank you.
It was. That one.
Mr. Reeve, if I, if I might add, that a simple amendment to the motion to amend second reading to amend the bylaw to remove number twenty-three in the bylaw, that would be...
Well, we did in the first reading.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's there.
I'm not sure either, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reeve, if I may, just, if you'll see on Appendix E, that is the original bylaw that was presented to council for the first reading, which shows bullet number twenty-three with Township Road six oh four A, and Appendix A is the amended bylaw where that bullet was removed.
Okay, so it's good.
So it is, so...
It has been removed in...
What Stephanie said.
Unless we've removed the wrong one in error, we did remove, yes.
It's good to go.
Okay, but it's, so I'm just looking at Schedule A, is that what you're talking about? Because it's still in Schedule A.
It's still in Schedule A, correct.
It's still in there, I'm reading it right now. Yeah. Number twenty-three.
Appendix A, you said, not, yeah, all right.
Yeah, so that's, so this is Appendix A, and twenty-three says...
So on Appendix A, bullet number twenty-three is Range Road four twenty-eight, between Township Road six twenty-four, and one thousand meters north of Township Road six twenty-four, maximum sixty kilometers per hour.
Yeah, it's weird, so I got it in mine, and I don't see it in yours. Sorry, mine doesn't look like it.
Okay, it's good. Okay, any, any other discussion? It's good. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. Need third? That bylaw seventeen ninety-six be given third reading?
I'll make the motion for third reading, please.
Thank you. Counselor Fadav makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen ninety-six be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Thanks, Louis.
I think I might still be up, Mr. Reeve.
Yes. No.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
I just gave it, didn't I?
Yeah.
You're done, though?
I do have one more that, but there'll be some discussion from council. Thank you.
Okay, on to seven point three?
Seven point two point three?
Seven point two point three, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, seven point two point three is the Riverhurst bin site placement addition to the agenda.
Sorry about that, guys. You're good to go now.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Reeve, members of council, the Riverhurst MD bin site has been located behind the Riverhurst Hall for over ten years. The site does not belong to the MD, and as such, the bins are not currently located on MD property. There are additional problems with this location, namely, the site is small and difficult for our trucks to maneuver. There is a ditch nearby, and there is a concern our trucks might slip down the slope. The site is behind the main building, making it easy for individuals to illegally dump or rummage through the garbages and the waste, and there's no room to add additional bins, and the bin sites therefore frequently overfill. In spring of two thousand twenty, a new location was proposed at southwest fifteen sixty-three three, west of the four, by administration, that moved the bin sites onto MD land approximately three quarters of a mile south of Highway fifty-five on Range Road four thirty-three. At the time, nearby residents opposed this change, and the proposal was ultimately abandoned before getting to MPC. Over the past two years, administration has approached some, but not all, nearby landowners concerning the sale of nearby land with no success. The situation remains a concern, and administration is looking for council's direction on how to proceed. The MD owns a piece of land that's ideally located only, only three quarters of a mile south of Highway fifty-five on Range Road four thirty-three, only one mile west of the current bin site location. The quarter section of land directly northwest of the MD-owned parcel contains approximately fifty residents, and during public consultation during the initial planning stages in two thousand twenty, approximately twenty-five residents signed a petition against proceeding with this relocation. This lack of support from the local residents appears to remain, as some have already communicated their opposition to our waste management department during recent informal public consultations. Increased traffic noise and the introduction of non-residents to the area appear to be the main issues. Another location has been discussed in the past at the Hilda Lake landfill, but it is located approximately ten kilometers from the current location and is considered too far for most of our residents in the area. No other sites have been identified as suitable by the manager of waste services, and the current site at the Riverhurst Hall can't be upgraded or built upon, as there is simply no space, even if all parties were agreeable to an upgrade or some sort of partnership. Hilda Lake landfill is currently open for business Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays from ten AM to six PM. This is a transportation, excuse me, a transfer, this is not a transfer station, it's just a bin site, so no provincial or federal regulations apply. And administration is recommending that council direct administration to continue discussions with local residents regarding the relocation of the Riverhurst bin site to southwest fifteen sixty-three three, west of the four.
Thank you. Mr. Reeve? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. If I could just add to Mr. Gandolfi's presentation, I did have a long conversation the other evening with Mr. Runge, who represents about forty of the residents at River Haven. And he indicated to me in the telephone call, and I believe in one of the letters I forwarded to council, and I believe council also received the letters, I wasn't sure if they had, but I was forwarding what I was getting as well, that they'd be happy to use Hilda. A couple of issues that I think council probably should give some consideration to. To move the bin site anywhere, there is a hundred thousand dollar carryover capital budget. If we were to move to Hilda, to the Hilda landfill and keep the current hours, that hundred thousand would not need to be spent. And in accordance with, you know, trying to be a little bit more financially prudent and find ways to save money, that landfill is open three days a week. The bin site could move there for virtually no cost. We could, if council wanted, move the bin site to Hilda for a twenty-four-seven bin site, to which that would probably have a cost, and I was speaking to the manager of waste services this morning, he's estimating around fifty thousand to move it to Hilda. We could have a twenty-four-seven bin site at Hilda. Whether it is as convenient for residents, but convenience is an interesting question, because some want convenience, but then they don't want a bin site anywhere close to their properties, so we have to find the next best solution. So my recommendation, and having spoke to Brad and to Louis earlier this morning, my recommendation is that we move it to the Hilda landfill site, leave it for three days a week, and not spend the hundred thousand dollars. And if there is issues with garbage and ditches, then we can always revisit this. We own that quarter section of land at the old Riverhurst gravel site. We could revisit this in a year, do a test for a year to see how it works out, and if it doesn't work out, then we could revisit what we, what we should or shouldn't do.
So, Riverhurst would be gone too, so we'd clean the bins right out of her, take them all north to Hilda?
We would clean, absolutely. We'd clean the bins out of there, move everything to Hilda, not spend the hundred thousand, see what it looks like in a year, and if it's working properly, we leave it alone, and if it's not working properly, we can always, we can always revisit this decision, because we own that quarter section of land.
Okay, Counselor Fadav?
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm glad you had discussions with, with Mr. Olin, he's a big part of this, a lot of, a lot of hard work done by him. Yeah, you know, I'm okay with, with seeing this as a, as a test program. My, my concern is, anybody that knows that area, it's, Hilda Lake is a ways away. It's, it's a long ways away. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, stuff in the ditch after. So, we want to try it out for a year, and then Brad's, Mr. Olin's pretty good with, with, I guess, gauging how much, you know, materials in the ditch, and, you know, what the hours are for picking it up, and we can do that, but the MD has set, set a precedence on, on bin sites. This is a Range Road, this is not in a private subdivision, this is on, on four thirty-three, it's down the road from them. We have these in Moose Lake, we have them in Cherry Grove, we have these bins everywhere, and, and you know what, there's, people are, people are happy with them. We do an excellent job of keeping them clean, and, and if we ever use that site for a shop down the road, it's, it's good, but I'm definitely okay with giving this a try and seeing where that, where that goes.
And also, Counselor Fadav, we can, we can still look at a few things over the summer here, maybe we can find another place, and...
We, we looked pretty extensively on that, and, and again, you know, the, the costs of that are, are kind of silly. So, you know, this is, we have our land there, we don't have to pay anything else, right? We don't have to buy another lot. So, it's not okay to have it three quarters of a mile past the subdivision, but it's okay for us to buy another lot in a subdivision and do it? Doesn't make sense to me, right?
And I also agree to, we do, I, most of the one I go by is North Shore Heights, and it's always like, first class, you just go by, it's always very clean.
And then the one past, past the golf course as well, right? You know, it's right in, right in, you know, all the, all the subdivisions. Another thing we could consider later on is on that road, you know, about, about speed, you know, we can keep that down to sixty kilometers, so on, right? So, you know, there's, there's other options, but I'm looking forward to, to the testing for sure.
Okay, we'll confirm motion?
I'll make that motion to do the, to kick it down the road and try to, try to Hilda Lake, whatever motion that is.
Mr. Reeve, if I could help with the motion, I would suggest a motion that would be to direct administration to move the Riverhurst bin site to Hilda Lake for a one-year test pilot project.
Yeah, exactly what I said.
Are you happy?
Yes.
Okay, just, yeah, one sec. Got to find where I'm at here. You gonna write that up and bring it up? Thank you. Well, we're waiting, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, how far is Hilda Lake from?
About ten K.
Like towards Cold Lake, the other way?
North, 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 towards the lakes. If you've ever been down there, it's, there's a bunch of, it's all cold mix going down there, and it's, it's, it's a ways out of the way, it's not, not close at all.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, like, I'll speak for the ones around Moose Lake, because I use the one in North Shore all the time, and I know the other one is, like, they're smack dab in the middle of, there's houses all over the place, and I don't hear any complaints about any of them any, anytime. They're well managed, and they're, they're not dirty sites, they're fenced in, and...
Yeah, they're well, they're well taken care of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how it would be a problem over here, but people don't understand, I guess.
I'll just, I'll just add to the comments. The bin sites that we have planned, we, we generally put them on MRs. So you've, you've kind of got a, a planned area, so you pick a community that, and you ask that group of people, do you, you know, would you like a bin site, does it, you know, is it gonna help you? And so there's, you know, there's kind of lots of that discussion, and so we, we don't generally purchase land for bin sites anyway, we have an MR that we've been putting them on. The folks out here were never kind of asked if they wanted a bin site, it just kind of popped up because the Riverhurst Hall, they had a single bin there probably ten years ago, just for the hall, as most halls have, and it just kind of started getting too filled up, and, which means, you know, we just probably had to clean it more, but I think we should just leave this kind of sleeping dogs alive for a while, and, and people are using, you know, people are, have been going... people are, have been going to Tulaby Lake, they've been going to Cold Lake, they've been going to Ardmore, like, that whole area, they'll go where they need to go to a landfill.
But there's like five at Riverhurst now, isn't there?
There's five there, I think, now, right?
That's a lot.
Yeah, so, I guess at Riverhurst, so we'll take all those bins out, or if they have one bin for their own, like, that one will probably get used, right?
Well, that's unfortunate part about, you know, like, they were kind enough to let us use it, and as developments were happening, you know, the same people that are opposing this were the ones calling the M.D., talking about, you know, what kind of terrible job we're doing with the five that we have there already. So, you know, it's, you know, while it's a mess, and, you know, this is full already, and that's full, but yet, you know, when we want to improve this, we're, you know, we're, now we're kind of held back as well, so.
Yeah, because anywhere we have a bin location, you drive by, it's like first class, it's very nice, very well kept, and there's always going to be somebody that's going to throw something, but how can Riverhurst Hall have that in their backyard continuously either?
Correct, yeah.
It's not their problem, they're supposed to have, every hall has one, I take it, so, are we leaving one there still for them, or are we gonna?
I think it's probably going to be their own.
Yeah, their own?
Yeah.
It'll be full all the time.
It's not, no, it wouldn't be their own, like, the M.D. actually supplies bin sites for halls. Ardmore has one, Riverhurst had one. We can ask Mr. Olin there to describe that.
I don't know how we're going to get around, people aren't using it though.
Because I don't think Cherry Grove has one, so I guess we're...
Nope.
Right? So is that side of the river.
That is a good...
Yeah, go ahead.
That is a good question, though, we need to, like, if there's one left at Riverhurst Hall, and people have to drive ten minutes out of their way to go to Hilda Lake to dump their garbage, why, what's going to stop them all from just, so we're going to have, take four away, leave one there, and everybody's going to put their garbage in one bin all of a sudden, right?
Well, we might have to put the speed limit up there, Josh, if they're going to get ten minutes, ten kilometers.
I'll just make the comment that people still recycle, so no matter what you do, if you just have a bin site there, they're gonna, there may be some folks that use it, but they're going to go to someplace to recycle their stuff anyway, so, I mean, I get garbage pickup in Ardmore, right, curb site, but I still go to Ardmore, because I got cans and glass and cardboard and the rest of it, I go to Cold Lake, I go to Ardmore, whatever.
Yeah, Councilor Fedev.
These, if we have the proper land, like Cherry Grove and the other places, they do have recycle stations there. They have, you know, four or five bins, they have cardboard, they have glass, they have all that stuff, and again, you know, we do such a fantastic job taking care of it, I think that would be a great opportunity to have that as a future development as well.
Okay, we have this motion that council directs administration to relocate the Riverhurst bin site to Hilda Lake landfill for a one-year term as a pilot project. You all right with that? All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you. Where are we at now, all planning committee? Seven three point one? Morning.
Good morning. First item today is the two thousand twenty-two Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare Gala. The Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare Gala, or sorry, Board of Directors have invited the M.D. of Bonneville to their eleventh annual Cards for Healthcare Gala to be held on Saturday, May fourteenth, at the Cold Lake Energy Center. They have also requested council to consider the equipment and silent auction prize donation sponsorship options for this year. Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare's aim is to ensure that everyone in the community has access to proper care by purchasing state-of-the-art equipment, providing upgrades to local healthcare facilities, and offering support to local healthcare professionals. With the annual gala canceled for the past two years due to the pandemic, Cards for Healthcare are now beyond excited to finally be able to celebrate in their victories on our local healthcare heroes and enjoy an evening together with all of their community supporters. Council has attended this gala event on an annual basis for over the last ten years, with the purchase of two tables and the provision of a medical equipment donation ranging between ten and fifteen thousand. Attached for council's review is the gala support package for this year. On the cost and sources of funding, our recommendation is to provide a fifteen thousand dollar donation, which would entail two tables for the event for council to attend, eight people per table, and as well as a donation to the silent auction for an M.D. staycation package, and the orthopedic drills equipment sponsorship level, which equates to fourteen thousand five hundred. After speaking with Cards for Healthcare, all of these would be incorporated into a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship level. The source of funding for this would be the two thousand twenty-two council budget for donations and transfers for non-government organizations. Therefore, administration's recommended action today is that council approves supporting the Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare two thousand and twenty-two gala for a total value of fifteen thousand dollars, which includes the purchase of two tables, a live auction prize donation, and equipment sponsorship to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gungunbal. Yes.
So whenever they ask for, they say, so the drills for, is that the total cost of those drills, or is that something that they're putting towards the cost? You know what I mean? Like, it's fourteen-five, the, I'm just curious, the orthopedic drills, is that the total cost of these drills, or is it, or is that just the name of the package?
I'm just reading that section here in that package. Items listed are from submitted funding requests presented to Cards for Healthcare by community stakeholders and is evolving. So, it's unclear in the information whether this is the cost per unit, or how many units they're going to be purchasing. My guess is, is this is, from talking with them, they prefer, when they're looking at sponsorships and fundraising opportunities, they like to give supporters the opportunity to support something tangible. So, they are stating that the fourteen-five for that specific piece of equipment will be used to purchase that equipment. Unfortunately, they're not providing any more detail other than that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm satisfied, I think, you know, it's a great cause, for sure, so I'll make the motion to approve option number one.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Skarson, he makes the motion that council approves supporting the Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare two thousand twenty-two gala for the total of fifteen thousand, which includes the purchase of two tables, a live auction prize donation, and equipment sponsorship to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you. Our second...
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chair, just have a quick follow-up. I'm going to throw a curveball in for administration here. Is there a way we can get a letter to, I guess, Minister Copeland, regards to the emergency center in Cold Lake? I don't think it's, I mean, these guys are working hard and getting equipment there, but yet we have people that are going into the ER, and there's notes saying, if this is an emergency, call nine-one-one. I think it's totally unacceptable. I know the mayor of Cold Lake has been working hard, and I think we need to support him on that, and we need to really, really make some noise with that, because it's totally unacceptable. AHS needs a review. This is not on the government, this is on AHS itself. We've been struggling with this for, you know, the last twelve years of getting doctors and everything else, and this is just unacceptable to go to emergency and have a sign there saying, just a slap in the face.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, directly to Councilor Fedev, if the council is interested in making a motion arising to direct administration to write a letter to the Health Minister regarding the lack of physicians at the Cold Lake Hospital for the Reeve signature.
Yeah, go right ahead.
If Councilor Fedev is interested in making that motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Anybody there want to support me on this?
Yep, everyone.
We'll just give...
Councilor Fedev? Do we actually have documentation, though, to, you know, because you hate to just kind of say that there's a note or whatever, but, so you're saying today, if somebody went to nine...
No, I'm not saying today, I'm saying that in the last two weeks, there had, it's, they've had limited hours, that after six o'clock, there is no emergency service, their doors are closed. Is it documented? Absolutely it is, and it's well known to them as well, and they are fully aware of the situation. Miss, 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 Vera?
Yeah, Dr.?
Yeah, like, the main person, CEO of AHS, was, you know, was supposed to come down for a visit to address the concerns, but I don't think that has happened. Yeah, there, this is not a made-up thing. Deputy?
I was going to mention this later, but, you know, the mayor, Copeland, keeps me informed as well as Lisa, the mayor here in Bonneville. Also, I met with, I was going to mention this later, but I'll mention it now, since it's, we met with the mayors and Reeves at RMA, and this is a big concern right across the province, and we do have a problem in this area, and, you know, I'm glad you brought up the ambulance service there, too. It is, it is, there was ten, fifteen Reeves that got up and chirped about that, and we have some real problems in the rural, and, you know, Cold Lake is one of them, they're on the end of fifty-five, they're the last place someone wants to go, so it's a long ways away from anywhere, so, thank you.
Yeah, with the Cold Lake Hospital, it is the regional stroke center, so if you have a stroke, that's where you're going to go, and they have all the equipment and specialties with it. Well, it's pretty bad when that can't even be serviced, so we need to get on that.
Well, our RMA president, he's having some meetings with the ministers, too, and he's looking for information, so I'm sending him some information from our AHS guys, and I'm sure he knows a lot about the doctor situation, because Mr. Copeland, the mayor of, the mayor of, city of Cold Lake, had stated it the week before at their convention, he had brought it up strongly, so...
Yeah, thank you.
And, Mr. Reeve, if I might add, I sat on the doctor retention recruitment committee at a previous municipality, it's a much more complicated issue than just pointing it at Alberta Health Services. The College of Physicians and Surgeons, who controls how doctors are certified in the province, particularly with foreign doctors who are coming to Canada, immigrating to Canada, that process has become fairly cumbersome, and so there's a whole variety of things here, some is provincial funding directly to Alberta Health Services, you know, in terms of the fight the province has had with the doctors for the last year, in terms of their own contract, Alberta Health Services is involved, and the college is involved, and of course, our location is, although we believe our location is perfect, not everybody coming to Canada believes our location is the best location, so it's a fairly complicated issue.
Councilor Fedev?
Yeah, it gets even deeper than that, it's all about the way AHS has it structured, so we are rural, you can't get any more rural than where we are, but because the city is considered urban, the pay structure is different. You can go to a small town with two, three thousand people, and you can get paid way more as a rural physician than somebody in Cold Lake as a urban physician, and that definitely has a detriment to the positions that are being filled, and, yeah, just, again, AHS needs to get a heavy restructure, and, again, the past government didn't do it, this government's having difficulties, and I'll take that job.
There was even issues, Mr. Reeve, and members of council, when I sat on the retention and committee, recruitment committee a bunch of years ago, we were actually using headhunters to recruit doctors specifically for the municipality and the region, and we're spending up to forty thousand dollars per headhunter who would actually find a doctor that was interested in coming. Alberta Health Services changed the rules on us and said, we won't accept doctors that have been privately headhunted by municipalities, they have to come through their system, so they shut that door on us. So there are some very, there are some obstacles that have been placed by Alberta Health Services to municipalities. I'm sure that if we had the ability to go around the world and find qualified physicians, and we're prepared to deal directly with them and bring them to our region, we could probably do a much better job of recruiting our own physicians than leaving it to the monolith that Alberta Health Services has become.
Yeah, and furthermore to that, that, you know, driving an ambulance, you get paid more in the city than you do here, so it's where you want to work, right? You're a young person, if you don't have ties to the area, you're going to go where it pays better, so that is an issue, it's not fair. All right, yes, Councilor, subject?
Yeah, I've got a comment to make on this, to add to what Ben's saying, I totally agree with everything here being said, but also with food services, laundry services, they moved out of our communities and in-house, moved everything to the city centers, and they're getting shipped food from the city, we don't have cooks, we don't employ people, we're not promoting our local communities, and food is a big factor in people's health, like, we're getting food sent from Edmonton, where we could be cooking it at our own, in-house, and promoting jobs in our community, and I believe there's a lot of issues we've got to look at, and I believe the AHS has taken our voice away from rural communities.
Mr. Reeve, sounds like there's lots to put in that letter.
Yeah, well, we have, okay, we have a motion that council approves the unbudgeted expenditures of additional sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-three towards Northern Lights Lib- nope, sorry.
So, yeah, that was a motion for the change...
Sorry, that council directs administration to draft a letter from the Reeve to the Minister of Health concerning the lack of physicians in the Cold Lake Healthcare Center, is that all right with you?
Yeah, as long as we copy the city of Cold Lake with that, and also the town of Bonneville. The same person that had the issues with AHS came to Bonneville, and within a half an hour, they were checked in, checked out, and they were looked after, because this is Covenant Health, and that's AHS, so it's different.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Mr. Reeve? Just before we move to the next one, we've got some new staff that I thought we would get introduced, so they could go back to work.
Okay.
So, first of all, if the general manager of Corporate Services would care to introduce our new grants coordinator?
Good morning, council. With me this morning, I have Gino Damo. Gino is our new grant coordinator, and he comes to us from this, he has about ten years' experience, he was previously the revenue manager at the city of Lidduk, and joins us in the grant coordinator position.
Welcome, do you... Do you have your fifteen-minute speech? Did you tell them about that? Welcome, I met you yesterday, yeah.
And Mr. Spalkel has somebody he'd like to introduce as well.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council, it's my pleasure to introduce Monte Dinenko as the new manager of transportation. I'll have him come up and give his resume, I guess. Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good morning.
Like Brian said, I'm the new manager of transportation, happy to join the team. Little background, I guess, I grew up in this area, born and raised, and worked away for a while, been in civil construction since I was eighteen years old, sitting on paving equipment and so on, and then went through to school, and when I started having kids, I moved back into the area, been working in this local area, predominantly in the oil field for the past twenty-some years, and looking for a change, and just happy to join the team. Everyone's been great so far, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but...
I have quite a list here. Well, welcome, yeah, anyone have any questions? Put them on the spot here.
I don't think so, I think I've heard your name before, though, so I think we're happy to have you.
Thank you, I'm happy to join.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're Northern Lights, right?
My second item today is the Northern Lights Library System two thousand twenty-two levy cost increase. The M.D. of Bonneville has been a member of the Northern Lights Library System since nineteen ninety-nine. Each year, the M.D. pays a per capita levy fee that is reviewed annually by the Board of Directors and disseminated to its membership at the beginning of each year for confirmation of approval. In December of two thousand twenty-one, council passed the two thousand twenty-two municipal operating budget, which included funds to maintain the M.D.'s membership with Northern Lights Library System that were in line with our two thousand twenty-one levy fee of one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. For the past three years, this fee has been based on the M.D.'s population count of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one, as per the two thousand sixteen federal census conducted by Statistics Canada. In late January two thousand twenty-two, Northern Lights advised administration that the municipal population being used for their two thousand twenty-two levy calculations are now being based on the Alberta Municipal Affairs approved two thousand and sixteen population list. are now being based on the Alberta Municipal Affairs Approved two thousand and sixteen Population List, as dictated by the Provincial Department's Public Library Services Branch. The M.D.'s population in this list was thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-three. Um, this population was based on the municipal census, which was actually conducted in two thousand and fourteen, uh, which at that time also included a shadow population for transient workers. Um, so it has been the highest population in the area ever. As per the two thousand twenty-one federal census by Statistics Canada, the current population of the M.D. is eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. Northern Lights Library System presented as a delegation to Council recently on March ninth, and further spoke to the larger levy request. Attached in Appendix A is a copy of that presentation. Appendix B is a copy of the requested payment. On costs and sources of funding, uh, currently, we have the one thousand, or sorry, one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in our two thousand twenty-two operating budget. The request, uh, that has come in as of January is now one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. So an additional sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars is required to maintain the M.D.'s membership in the Northern Lights Library System for this year. Our recommended sources of funding, should we proceed, is, uh, to come from Council's grants to industry and non-government organizations, which that current budget for two thousand twenty-two is two hundred and fifty thousand, and the current budget remaining in that, uh, G.L. is now one hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred. Therefore, Administration's recommended action is that Council approves the unbudgeted expenditure of an additional sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-three towards the Northern Lights Library System twenty, two thousand and twenty-two annual membership levy fee to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve that.
Thank you, Counselor Crick. The motion is that Council approves the unbudgeted expenditures of additional sixteen four four three towards the Northern Lights Library System two thousand twenty-two annual membership levy fee to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Fede.
Yeah, it was, it was great to hear them, uh, a couple of weeks ago when they spoke, and it's definitely a need, and we'd like to thank the, the reps for making time to, uh, to meet us and to discuss this particular subject right here, so it was, we had, we had a lot of information then, so it's good.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I, I'm not necessarily against that, but when they did present, I did ask, um, you know, why, why the higher amount and how they came up with their population figures, and it, it, there was no clear answer, and, um, I'm just kinda wondering why they're not using, why they're not using a population figure that's more related to what we actually do have.
Uh, I think it was fairly clear, because it's based on a shadow population that they used previously.
No, I realize, I realize, that's clear. I just realized, when I asked them specifically, they weren't clear on why they're not actually using a more recent population figure, not from something from two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen that was really high. But they, their comment was, "Well, you got a good deal over the last three years." But I'm not sure if that was a good deal or not.
Mr. Krimbo.
Um, through the Reeve, uh, when speaking with their administration, they've told us that the number and the choice of that specific year, um, was told to them through, uh, the, the Public Library Services Branch of Municipal Affairs. So they unfortunately do not have an option, um, to, to base it on another number, um, because that branch also provides them with an operating grant, um, which is based on this specific, uh, population. So Administration's point of view is, uh, or our recommendation was, if there was any sort of, uh, discussion or confirmation as to why, it would have to be directed to Municipal Affairs to find out, "Why are we using a two thousand sixteen number instead of the most recent number available?"
So we can't just pay them for what our, our census say? We have to pay this number?
That's what they're requesting, yes.
Even, even if they're requesting it, do we have to pay that, or can we do, go off of our census?
And if we do not pay the levy that they're requesting, um, then as per their bylaw and their requirements, then we would be defaulted in our membership.
Correct. Anyone else?
Let me just clarify, this isn't our census. Wasn't this a federal census that was done in two thousand thirteen or fourteen?
Two thousand sixteen, the, how it worked back in two thousand sixteen was the province allowed municipalities to conduct municipal censuses, and they re, they recognized it as our official populations. So, um, in two thousand sixteen, that approved list by the province, that number was based off of our two thousand fourteen municipal census. So, um, it takes them normally a year to approve the new number. Um, in this case, it took them two years to approve it as our official. So even though the census count was completed in two thousand fourteen, the province approved it as our official population in two thousand sixteen.
So when's the next, when was the next census after that? Are you saying we haven't had one since two thousand fourteen?
So that municipal population from that census through the Reeve, uh, was valid for a period of three years. After that point, it switched back to the federal census numbers. Then that number was what was incorporated into the province's approved numbers for those preceding years. Now, that all being said, there is currently a lot of, uh, and it's, it's very unclear right now, um, from discussions with Municipal Affairs and other municipalities, which populations, um, the province are recognizing. Depending on which grant, for example, you're looking at, they use a different number, or they choose a different year that they approved a population. Some use our most current, some use a two thousand sixteen number, some use a two thousand twenty number, so it's, there is very little consistency right now, um, being seen from Municipal Affairs.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point three three, yes.
Third item today is Policy Number Three C point zero one one, Community Association Operating Grant Policy Amendment. Um, this is just a quick amendment. Administration is proposing, um, due to, uh, previous revision back in December, um, when looking at the listing of the approved societies, uh, to receive this grant, unfortunately, there was an error, and Goodridge Social and Agricultural Society was omitted from the policy's approved eligible community associations. So Administration is just requesting Council to approve restoring, uh, the Goodridge Social and Agricultural Society to the approved list. So today, Administration's recommended action is that Council adopts Policy Number Three C point zero one one, Community Association Operating Grant Policy as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to adopt that policy as amended.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Reeve Swiger, for making that motion, that Council adopts Policy Number Three C point zero one one, Community Association Operating Grant Policy as amended. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Fede.
Uh, hi, thanks, just, I guess maybe look for a little bit of clarification, um, in regards to, uh, the museums and, and historical societies. Uh, did they always get to twenty-five, or they were, or were they at a lower, at a lower price?
Through the Reeve, uh, these rates were, I believe, they were higher earlier, uh, back in twenty, up until two thousand eighteen-ish. Council actually reduced their rates, uh, from what they were previously, but it was, I think, a reduction of maybe five thousand dollars at that time.
Okay, yeah, I just, uh, I'm probably a little confused through, I thought museums, uh, were getting the fifteen, like, uh, like everybody else was, like the urban s, uh, seniors and Chamber of Commerce, I thought they were at fifteen, not at, not at the twenty-five. Uh, somebody could clarify that?
Counselor Crivie.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing. Uh, the museums were at fifteen thousand before as well.
Through, through the Reeve, um, actually, the museums and historical societies were added to this list through this policy, because up until, and I believe that revision was made, uh, with the last overhaul of this a few months ago. Previous to this, there wasn't, they weren't actually listed in a policy to receive a grant, however, it was always incorporated into our, our operating budget to give them this twenty-five thousand each, because part of that is actually paid through the M.S.I. operating grant, which the M.D. has gotten every year. Um, fifty thousand dollars of that annually has been provided to these two organizations for over the past fifteen years.
I thought it was fifteen thousand, every year, yeah, that's...
Up until, uh, through the Reeve, sorry, uh, up until December, they were not included in this policy. Community Services, when trying to compile everything into one policy, we had added it into the policy.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanna confirm that. So you know for a fact that they're getting twenty-five, not fifteen?
They have been, absolutely, I'm a hundred percent sure. They have been getting twenty-five thousand for the last twelve years.
Boy, it looks like three guys figured they're getting fifteen thousand here. I don't know, I'm new to, new to the game.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
I am almost a hundred percent certain that they were receiving fifteen thousand dollars each.
If Council would like, uh, we can bring back, uh, we can pull the financial reports and, and show what has been paid out to the two museums over the past twelve years.
Yeah, I would, I would love to see you prove Counselor Crivieak wrong.
Hey, you can show him something in a while. All right, we have this motion. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I thought you were agreeing with me.
Well, I wasn't a hundred percent, I was like ninety-nine.
All right, uh, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
We got a delegation now, I believe?
Public hearing.
Public hearing? Let me see. Yes, public hearing. Yes, we do.
I do, sorry.
Okay, welcome back. Uh, we're going into a public hearing. I was just wondering if there's anyone here to speak for or against this? Yeah, I'm gonna need a motion. I was just wondering if there's anybody here first. Nope, so I'm just gonna go right into, I need a motion to open this public hearing. Yes. Okay, thank you, Counselor Crivieak makes a motion to go into a public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? So I'm just, uh, any questions from Administration? I need a presentation, I guess. Here she comes. Morning, Lisa. Ms. Foliate.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this public hearing is for, uh, Bylaw Number LU five seven three, the amending of the Land Use Bylaw. With the redesignation of the M.D. of Bonneville's Development Authority from the Municipal Planning Commission to Council, Bylaw Number one six six seven, the Land Use Bylaw needs to be amended to reflect this change. The current Land Use Bylaw refers to the Municipal Planning Commission frequently throughout the document as the municipality's development authority. This proposed bylaw, LU five seven three, amends the Land Use Bylaw to make it compliant with this change of development authority to Council. Additionally, with the re, uh, with the recent amalgamation of ID three four nine lands into the municipality through the province of Alberta Order in Council, Administration has incorporated, incorporated two new direct control districts for these newly acquired lands. Attached is Appendix A are the proposed changes to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Reeve, I did have, I had questions about, uh, uh, the Land Use Bylaw changes, and, and it was just questions about areas that I wasn't really familiar with, so I, uh, went and tried to grab a new M.D. map, thinking that maybe I could see that. I'll ask the C.I.O., maybe if, uh, it's, I'll ask you, are we working on sort of an update of that map so that these areas will be shown, and I'll, I'll talk about this, um, Dillon River Wildland Park. It's, it's actually on a, it's, there's something physically there called that, but it's not shown on our maps, because we don't have new maps yet, so just would be nice if people were kind of asking about ID three forty-nine, but this area is kind of above that, and I thought, I didn't think it was in, in our M.D. It actually is in our M.D., but if we can get a updated map.
I, I can ask Jolene to put a map up for you, if you'd like.
Sure.
Um, and through the, uh, uh, Chair, to, uh, Counselor Swiger, uh, this particular amendment is regarding, uh, the M.P.C., so any other amendments to the document, including maps, would have to come to another public hearing to amend the Land Use Bylaw. Uh, I would suggest, and it has been discussed at the administrative level, that our Land Use Bylaw is, um, is getting time for a complete overhaul from, uh, front to back. Um, and at that point, a lot of these things would be done, but today's public hearing was specific to, uh, the changes requiring Municipal Planning Commission, so I'm not sure that we're all that prepared to answer too many que, other questions about any other changes to the Land Use Bylaw today, as we haven't had a chance to research any of those other changes, so...
Yeah, no, I didn't, I, uh, wasn't looking for, I'm happy with the changes, actually, but I, just as reading it, I'm reading through this and thinking, well, what is this Dillon Wildlife? You know, I didn't think it was in our M.D. It, it truly is in the M.D. now with the annexation of, or with ID three forty-nine?
Yes, through the Reeve, um, our Direct Control District Number Four that we're proposing does mention the Dillon Conservation Area of the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan. Um, so Jolene does have a map she can put up to show you that this conservation area does actually touch the top two, uh, townships that are now part of the M.D. of Bonneville. So that number five above the Cold Lake Air Weapons Range is the bottom portion of the Dillon Conservation Area.
Okay, and that, that just clarified, clarified it for me. I wasn't familiar with that area, so now it's, uh, in Counselor Fede's words, so we'll get direction from him.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Okay, that's, that's it. We just need a motion to go out of public hearing now? Yeah, Counselor Crick makes a motion to go out of public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
I guess I should have stayed up here.
Yep.
So you ready for the next?
Sure.
Sure, Road Allowance Bylaw Number one seven eight eight.
Yep.
Bylaw Number one seven eight eight is the renewal of an existing road allowance lease bylaw, Number one six nine nine, approved on December twelfth of two thousand eighteen for a portion of roadway on the east end of Spruce Avenue located in Evergreen Estates, as shown on Appendix B. It is intended to be used for maintaining the license area to reduce fire hazard and deter unsolicited traffic and abandoning of vehicles. The public hearing was held on March ninth of twenty, twenty twenty-two, and no negative correspondence or communication has been received or brought forth at the public hearing. Administration is recommending that Council give second reading to Bylaw Number one seven eight eight, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion for second reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fede, for making the motion that, this is seven eight eight, correct? That Bylaw Number seven eight eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of, Number eighty-seven, roadway's license to be given second reading, Carrie? To be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Oh, we need third?
I'll make a motion, I'll give, be given, Bylaw seventeen eighty-eight be given third reading.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slupchik, for making the motion that Bylaw Number seventeen eighty-eight be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Onto the next one.
So the second one is Road Allowance Bylaw Number one seven eight nine. It is renewal of an existing road allowance lease bylaw, Number one seven oh three, that was originally approved December twelfth of two thousand eighteen. This is for a portion of government road allowance west of the northwest of thirteen sixty-one oh five, and is intended to be used for grazing and wintering cattle and access the northeast of fourteen sixty-one oh five, owned by the same applicant. Public hearing was also held on March ninth of two thousand twenty-two, and no negative correspondence or communication. Administration is recommending Council give second reading to Bylaw Number one seven eight nine, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve Swiger?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make motion to go to second reading.
Okay, thank you, uh, Deputy Reeve Swiger makes a motion that Bylaw Another, Number seventeen eighty-nine being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway license be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, and now we need a third motion, or, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll, I'll make the motion to go to third reading.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Crick, uh, makes a motion that Bylaw Number seventeen eighty-nine given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Onto, uh, seven ninety, seventeen ninety?
Road Allowance Licensing Bylaw one seven nine zero. Road allowance licensing bylaw one-seven-nine-zero is a renewal of existing road allowance, lowered allowance lease bylaw, one-seven-oh-two, which was approved December twelfth of twenty-eighteen. This is for a portion of road allowance east of the northeast of thirty-four, sixty-three-of-seven, as shown on Appendix B. It is intended to be used for pasturing cattle and reducing fire hazard by keeping the grass down. Public hearing was held March ninth, twenty-two, with no negative correspondence or communication. Administration is recommending council give second reading to bylaw number one-seven-nine-zero, and furthermore, if carried, proceed on to third reading.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion for second reading, please.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, um, Fadé makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen-ninety being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadway and licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, need, uh, third reading, please.
I'll make a motion, accept third reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sipchik for making the motion, bylaw number seventeen-ninety be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. On to seventeen-ninety-one.
So road allowance licensing bylaw seventeen-ninety-one is to license a portion of road plan six-three-eight BM adjacent to the east boundary of the northwest of twelve, sixty-three of two, to connect the former African Lake Bike Trail to provide a designated route for off-highway vehicles to connect the north and south ends of the city of Cold Lake. A public hearing was held March ninth of twenty-two. No negative correspondence or communication has been received or was brought forth at the public hearing. So administration is recommending council give second reading to bylaw number one-seven-nine-one, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed on to third reading.
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for second reading.
Okay, uh, thank you, Deputy Reeve Swager makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen-ninety-one being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadway license be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. We need third reading, please. Thank you, Counselor Crick makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen-ninety-one be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. On to seventeen-ninety-two.
And my final one, uh, road allowance licensing bylaw seventeen-ninety-two is a license to port, is a license to, to lease a portion of government road allowance adjacent to the west boundaries of the northwest of eighteen and the west half of nineteen on sixty-four-of-five. It is intended to be used for grazing and the reduction of fire hazard. A public hearing was held on March ninth, twenty-two. No negative correspondence or communication was received regarding this application. However, one MD resident was present at the public hearing to give verbal presentation in opposition of the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw numbers one-seven-nine-two, and furthermore, if carried, proceed on to third reading.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we give the bylaw one-seven-nine-two second reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselors. Sipchik, uh, makes a motion that bylaw seventeen-ninety-two being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, roadways and license be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just, uh, the, the comments that the gentleman actually made, some of them were related to, uh, uh, locking gates so people don't have access to roadway. So just making it clear that, uh, roadway licensing, uh, they can't lock a gate, they can put a gate, but they can't lock the gate, so public does have access to, to our road allowances undeveloped or otherwise, so, yeah.
Yes, through the reef, that is correct, as per our licensing of roadway policy three-A. Point zero-one-eight, they are not allowed to restrict public access through the roadway, through the use of any locking mechanism or gates, on-gates, or other installed structures.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, need third reading, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Cravieak makes the motion that bylaw number seventeen-nine-two be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
There's one more.
One more?
Only some questions?
Okay, sorry, yep. Yes. Tolu.
Hello again, council.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning. Seven-point-four is the Bonneville and District, District C-two Center Agriplex renovations. I'll just refer to it as the C-two. Um, the admin, administration received a letter from the C-two General Manager informing the MD of the board's decision to transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from reserves to fund a portion of the phase-one renovations. A copy of the letter would have been provided to you or using your package. The total project cost for phase-one of the C-two renovations is seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, and the C-two has already secured funding totaling four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand. That's a portion from the MD and the other half from the town of Bonneville. However, um, additional funds are required for phase-one, totaling two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and the C-two is requesting that we transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from reserves to fund this portion of the project and that the town of Bonneville does the same. So the reserves were built from funds that were surplus from the, um, from C-two operations over the past few years. So we do have sufficient funds in reserve if coun, if council chooses to fund this project so that the C-two can carry on with phase-one of the Agriplex, Agriplex renovations. I also want to point out to council that next council meeting we will be bringing, um, forward a lone bylaw to support the previous motion that council made to fund the other phase of the, of the renovation. This is phase-one, the other portion, the two-hundred-thousand, is for the second phase.
Thank you. Head council?
Yeah, I'll just add that this is, I, this is one that I forgot to bring to the table there last time around. It was, uh, this is just transferring from their reserves, uh, in order to help pay for the first phase. We approved the, the second phase funding, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to, um, for option number one there. Council approves mastering from the reserves, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Skarson makes a motion that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of one thousand, sorry, a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Recreation Reserve C-two towards the phase-one of the Agriplex renovation project as requested by the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation, Part Nine, C-two Board. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just, uh, Counselor Skarson, can you just clarify the two different phases and, and what we talked about previously?
Well, phase-one was, um, the, the ceiling and the floor, and then phase-two is basically the walls. So we're gonna be able to do them all at one. And this, I'll just kind of add that this is, uh, there was, this reserve fund is the C-two's reserve fund, it's not the MD's, right? Like, um, it is and it isn't. It's, it's not, doesn't come out of our un-reserved funds, it's, um, come out of the C-two, but we still have to approve them transferring that money over, right? So.
Yeah, so through the reef, these are funds, so when we give money to the C-two, they're rec, they're levies on an annual basis. If they have a surplus, they return it to both us and the town of Bonneville, and then we put it in this reserve. So it's, it's, Counselor Skarson is right, we don't budget specifically for this reserve to put funds in. It's from funds that they've given back over the years and we've set aside, and then they have projects.
And it's typically been used for capital projects throughout the years.
Okay, Deputy Reeve?
So just to clarify again, though, so, uh, no problem with this, that's their money, really, we're holding it as a reserve, but are they still taking out a
Yes.
Credit Union Bank loan or whatever it was?
Yes.
Yeah. This is the, this is just part of the funding, I mean, there's different pieces or whatever, right? But, um, this is one piece, is to pull some of that money from the, the Capital Reserve Fund there, and then, uh, phase-two was the, the bank loan.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The, the intent was to be able to do it all in one, instead of phasing it in, in over the next couple of years, right?
Any discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, just one more question, then. Do we, how much, do we have reserves still? We still have reserve funds left for C-two? Or is that cleared all out?
It's in the package, it's two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, so take one-fifty away, it'll still be almost a hundred thousand.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, where are we at here? Seven-point-four? Seven-point-four-one? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Bylaw number one-seven-nine-seven, the master rates bylaw. The MDA requires council to pass bylaws regarding services provided by the municipality, which includes the fees charged for providing those services. On December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, council passed bylaw number one-seven-eight-six, the master rates bylaw, consolidating all fees charged by the MDA Bonneville. As a result, several municipal, municipal policies were reviewed and changes to rates were made and implemented as of January first, twenty-twenty-two. At the February ninth council meeting, council reviewed policy four-A dot zero-two-zero, which is the disposal of used culverts policy, and directed administration to reduce the cost of used culverts from fifty percent to no charge for MD residents. Additionally, council approved policy number three-A zero, three-A dot zero-one-six, the commemorative bench and picnic table program policy, which included the provision for applicants to purchase a picnic table or bench. The fee for this program has now been incorporated into the master rates bylaw. Attached to council as Appendix A is bylaw number one-seven-nine-seven, amending the master rates bylaw. The updated Schedule A includes the revision discussed on the, on reducing the cost of used culverts from fifty percent to no charge and the inclusion of fees for the commemorative bench and picnic table program.
Looking for a motion? Thank you, Counselor Cravieak makes a motion that bylaw number seventeen-ninety-seven being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend bylaw number seventeen-eight-six master rates bylaw to be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Check signing limits. Administration is requesting that the sign notoriety limits for checks be increased to one-hundred-thousand without requiring the Reeve or Deputy Reeve's signature. The ten-thousand-dollar limit that's currently in place has been in place for several years and was last passed at the organizational meeting on October twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen. All payments issued, issued by the MD are for expenditures that are budgeted or approved through a council motion. So our request today is that council, um, increases the limit for check signing from ten-thousand dollars to a hundred-thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yep.
I, I would point out to council that the motion in twenty-eighteen was a reaffirmation of the ten-thousand, the ten-thousand limit has been in place. We can't even find the original motion.
For a long time.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So, Mr. Reeve, do you just want to have one signature instead of two?
Uh, no, the signing authority will stay with two people, it'll be the, uh, the Reeve or the Deputy Reeve or myself or, uh, the General Manager of Corporate Services. So there's always two signatures on all of our checks now, including the checks under a hundred thousand. We changed that a while ago that they require two signatures as well.
Okay, thank you. I see a lot of checks at nine thousand and you're signing the one that's ten thousand something, so it just...
Ten thousand, two thousand.
Yeah. Yes, Deputy Reeve?
I'd like your answer, Mr. CAO. It's just not written that way, it just says that council approves the CAO or General Manager of Corporate Services to be signing authority for checks under a hundred thousand. One signature. Uh, understood, uh, I, I must've missed out when I read the options, because we did change probably sixty days ago now
January first.
To, to two signatures, both, uh, both the General Manager and myself signed. If you wanted, if council wanted to make a quick amendment to motion, to that first motion, that it's both, absolutely, because that's, that's our current practice. Yeah, definitely, just.
We should fix that right now? Wait a couple of seconds here and they can print it in? Thank you, good catch.
It's like those two counselors aren't listening to you with these earplugs in, they're like, you look over and they're like, are they actually listening or?
Mr. Reeve, I'm sure I'm drawing this song I'm listening to right now.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
I, I'm, uh, doing the beat to it, like it's a Ukrainian song.
It's a polka from nineteen-sixty-eight. The big bird polka.
Big belly polka. Thanks, Jolene.
She's been fixed.
Yes, sir.
Right on. Right, did someone make a mo, who made the motion?
Cravieak.
Yes, Councilor Cravieak? Can you make that motion? All right, that counts, uh, great, uh, thank you. Uh, Counselor Cravieak for making the motion that council approves the Chief Administration Officer to, or designate and General Manager of Corporate Services to be signing authority for checks one-hundred-thousand and under, and for checks a hundred thousand and over, the Reeve or Deputy Reeve and CAO or General Manager of Corporate Services as signing authorities. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, it's too silver, the discussion part there.
Yes.
I just wondered if, is that a hundred thousand, is that kind of a standard for municipalities? Or are we, it seems like going from a jump from ten thousand to a hundred thousand to have the Reeve or the Deputy Reeve signature is quite a big jump, really. Curious about that.
Uh, to Counselor Crick, uh, through the reef, uh, municipalities differ widely. For example, uh, Rockyview County, the Reeve didn't sign any checks. Um, in other municipalities, I, I've been involved in, the Reeve will only sign checks that are, you know, over a million dollars. It, it's, it's really dependent on the municipality and the comfort level with administration and what, uh, what levels, uh, what levels we should be signing. I, I would leave it to the Reeve to speak to, he sees the checks on a, you know, for the last, uh, almost six months now.
Yes.
And, uh, they're all pretty standard fare. Uh, we do lots of business that exceeds a hundred thousand, we do lots of business that is less than a hundred thousand, and, uh, it's, uh, so it's really all over the map municipality-wise, is to, uh, smaller municipalities will have smaller limits, bigger municipalities will have no, will have no limit.
And I'm happy with this change. Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, are all of our bills paid by check or do we do any transfers? Or, and if so, what is the percentage, like wiring money or electronically?
Um, through the reef to Counselor Skarson, most of our payments are actually through EFTs, um, through electronic fund, transfers to our bank, but our process is every week right now, the Reeve gets a listing of that and those that are being paid by checks. And it is signed off on by our CAO and either the Reeve or Deputy Reeve before we release the payment. So even though they're not physical checks, we do treat their approvals in the same manner. We just have some people that won't go to EFTs.
Well, you mentioned the Reeve, I mean, we used to get those check runs as well, kind of, but I haven't seen one in quite a while, so I don't know if that's just you now getting that, or?
I di, I don't, I don't remember, I wasn't here when, if you guys, I don't remember ever getting those years ago, did we?
Well, she's saying that you're getting them now.
Yeah, well, I get them now.
Yeah. Well, we got them just about the whole last term, I would say.
Through the river, you're referring to the check register then? So we, we don't do the check register anymore, however, we do the quarterly financial reports. So what you're not getting is the individual listing of what we pay each person, but before payments are approved on a weekly basis, the Reeve actually signs off on that.
Yeah, I have to, I have to initial it off. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seven-five-one? Morning.
Morning. I have, uh, the RFD before you for policy number four-A point zero-zero-two, the road ban policy amendment. Policy four-A point zero-zero-two road ban policy has not been reviewed since June of twenty-fourteen. Review polit, the review of this policy was scheduled for twenty-nineteen and did not take place. Administration has now reviewed the policy and has presented an amended policy for council's[1707.73] consideration. The current policy has road ban committee comprised of the Reeve, chief administrative officer, and the general manager of infrastructure services. The road ban committee has the authority to place and lift road bans under the, on roads under the authority of the MD. Administration conducted a quick survey of ten random municipalities to compare their processes of establishing road bans within, or with the MD's current policy. Of those surveyed, six had the decision to ban roads with administration. Two had a committee consisting of the Reeve, CAO, and GM of Infrastructure Services determining the road bans. One had council setting the road bans and one used road use agreements to control overweight hauling, so they had no road bans at all. Administration has proposed a revision of the current road ban policy to allow administration to determine the need and timing of road ban implementation and removal in appendix A, as it was seen to be the municipal best practice. Having the policy amended to this process allows administration to implement or remove road bans based on weather and road conditions that may change within a matter of days without waiting for a scheduled meeting of council. This process, this process will speed up the MD's reaction time to emerging situations during the critical spring thaw season. Another option for council's consideration is that, is for the MD to eliminate road bans and work on a road use agreement basis with other, with the users. Although this, although further research on this option is required, municipalities have successfully implemented this structure. The recommended action from administration is that council adopts policy four A point zero zero two road ban policies as amended.
Yeah, Councilor Crick then Deputy Reeve.
I'll just move, go ahead and move the motion that we adopt policy four A zero zero two as amended.
Okay, we have, we have a motion from Councilor Crick that council adopts policy number four A zero zero two road ban policy as amended. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, my only concern, and I'm sure the CAO will do this anyways, that you notify council immediately when you make that decision, because we've had that in the past where roads have been banned. We didn't know about it until we get a nasty phone call, so, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, through the Reeve to answer that question. Number seven at the back page of the, of the policy administration is to notify Alberta Transportation Council and MD public safety of all road bans once they are put into effect and once they are lifted. So that's already in the policy.
And through the, through the Reeve to council, I would suggest that there is, and I know administratively, we're not opposed to it, to the idea of no road bans at all. We could control our roads in the, in the spring thaw season through the use of good road use agreements. We have good agreements. Our industry is a, in a large part why we can afford it, we can afford. And if we had a, you know, for example, a seventy-five percent road ban, let's say in a ward, Ward Three, which is a pretty active ward, what ends up happening is because the axle weight is reduced to seventy-five percent, what that really means is in many cases, they're reducing their ability to carry fluid in a tanker to thirty percent of what the tanker can actually carry, which is actually a money losing proposition for industry who is in large part paying a lot of the MD bills. So we're not opposed to looking at a no road ban in terms of an effort to, to be industry friendly. And if that's a direction council would be interested in going, we're certainly not opposed to that either.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with that because we used to have that in place years ago and it worked very well. And, you know, if they broke a road, they fixed it. And administration can definitely, you know, Brian is the chief there, he's not going to let them smash a road to no end and just not look the other way. And they're not gonna, they're not gonna smash a road, you know, because they know they have to fix it. So I'm, I'm for no road bans at all. Go ahead, Counselor Fedev.
I unfortunately totally disagree with that. You know, until we get strong road use agreements in place, we deal with it. Right now, there are industries, maybe not on the energy side, but hauling, that are pounding the crap out of these roads and nothing's being done. And, you know, I just, I disagree. I think we have to have some stuff in place. I think it could be down the road, but right now, as of this year, or, yeah, we're not ready for it. I don't see those, those road use agreements. When you, when you drive by this, this road and it's complete washboard and it's like a fog and you can't see, we have an issue. And it's affecting our residents and people that are hauling, you know, are making money and it should be in their business plan. And it should be some good...
Yeah, fog meaning, fog meaning what, like dust?
Just the dust, that there's that much dust.
Yeah, but that has probably nothing to do with banning the road for weight.
Why not?
Well, dust and weight are two different...
I'm talking about, about road use agreements, right?
Right, right.
So, yeah, it is, it is, some of it is weight because why are these things full of washboards? So...
Well, just continuous use probably more than anything, but...
Getting back to the road use agreements.
We're talking about for weight here, not for washboards.
I mean, and that's, that's what I've seen, you know, like what is like in the fall or, or spring? It's out there as well. So I think some of these policies have to be fairly strong and, you know, once those are in place, I am okay with it, but right now, I don't think we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sutchak?
Yes, I heard that there was a road ban policy previously, there was no road ban policies. Then we got one now. When did that come into effect and why was it put into effect? Do we know that or, can you answer me on that please?
Yeah, through the Reeve, looking at the bottom of the, of the policy, the date adopted was January nine, nineteen ninety-two, and the date reviewed was June eleven, twenty fourteen. So it appears to me that this policy was adopted back in nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I also think we better, we should maybe consider getting rid of a word, a road ban, but we do, we do need some really good road use agreements. And I think Counselor Slipchak has, had brought up a previous point that we have had a road ban on in previous years, but I think the comment you made was that it didn't appear that a lot of the industry guys were abiding by the road ban. But, so I just think, and if we had tighter road use agreements, and I can remember years back where we actually gave these guys a list of the roads that they could use, so they weren't destroying some of the small, you know, light, light roads. And they stuck to that and it was, I thought it was working, but I think we need to have better road use agreements and that kind of direction, and I think we can get rid of the road bans. Yeah, I'm absolutely positive, like you guys were a few minutes ago. When I sat on that industrial, we had for, for the companies that were hauling oil and gravel and stuff, we never had, we had, we had something in order that let them haul right through, but if they are wrecking a road, they'd, they'd get off it or go a different route. We never, we never put them down to thirty percent at that time. That's quite a few years ago, but, and it worked well at that time, but, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. A couple of things. We have maps worked out with, with the two main players, CNRL and Baytex, as to where they are allowed to haul, what roads they are supposed to use. So those, those roads are, are the ones in particular that we'd be focusing on. I would suggest that even through the committee setup that we used last year, we, the committee met, road bans went on, and within three days, we were getting pressured from local councillors to get the road bans off because CNRL was reaching out to the local councillors saying, we can't haul anything. And as a result, we removed the road bans because now CNRL can't haul. So if we're going to, if, if the council is committed to allowing administration to make these decisions, then understand that administration will make these decisions and, and when CNRL calls, the road ban's a road ban. I think the road ban process, the no road ban potentially has greater control. We actually have good agreements with CNRL. We have met and know Reeve Kalinsky and Counselor Slipchak and Counselor Krevik who sit on the industry committee in particular. We've had good conversations with them. CNRL in particular has committed to staying on the routes that, and policing their own activities. Potentially maybe similar to our conversation earlier this morning about Riverhurst, maybe, maybe an idea would be to attempt a one-year test project with a no road ban policy and have us come back at this time or, or at some point at the end of the ban season with, with a report as to how well it worked or didn't work. And then from there, council could make a permanent decision to either go back to a road ban policy or to, or to, or to continue with no road bans. Anyway, that's, but I know last year we had bans on and then the phones started ringing and then bans came off.
Counselor, Counselor Fedev?
I, I think it's, we've got to be very cautious with implementing something for a year and then pulling it back if, if it's not working. I think we need to really work on our road use agreements and make them tight, because once we let this trial go for a year, it's going to be assumed that, hey, you know, like nothing went wrong even though there maybe was some issues. Again, you have to remember, you know, we're, we're getting challenged on, on, on a lot of our taxes with, with industry. So, you know, we're, our money is less and less. Again, last year on assessments, we lost eight million. There's going to be the, the assessment, the assessment modifier that, that might change as well. And that's going to be more, that's potentially another loss of income for the MD. So I, we have to be careful on how much money we're putting on roads because of industry usage. So I'm, I'm just saying to be, just to be, to be careful, be cautious. And I think if we're going to do this for the next, I think we just have to work on our agreements. So, but I, I'm just, we're opening up the can worms. Those worms are pretty tough to, you know, to put back in the can after.
Okay, thank you. Deputy?
But you've just heard the CAO, Counselor Fedev, say that there is already a problem with the road bans because we, they put road bans on and then a week later, he gets all kinds of phone calls because they're not hauling, so we take them off. So I would say, no, I think we need to try some kind of a trial for a year and I'd be willing to make the motion to remove road bans for a year as a trial and, but come up obviously with kind of road use agreements and have those good discussions so that we're not destroying our roads.
Counselor Fedev?
If there is a ban on a road, there's a reason for it. The reason for it, it is not up to industry standards, which is a paved road. And maybe, maybe that's something, you know, that we should look at and do with industry is a partnership on developing that road to make that road so it can be used twenty-four seven. And some of these roads that, that aren't, I mean, they're going through, you know, softer areas and, and they're getting beat up. So, you know, that's what we have to be careful of. It's, you know, I get it, but this is just not a one-way streak. It's, it's coming out of our budget, out of our capital, and we're seeing less and less funding come from there. So I'm, I'm just saying it's, we have to just be careful and we just have to do due diligence to our, our decision here and not just say, yeah, it's open. Why isn't, you know, why is that road used for that, that ban on? Because maybe it's, it is coal mix and it is soft. Should that, should that road get maybe a pavement or rebuilt? Very possible, right? Depending on, and what does that look like for industry? Is industry going to punch another twenty, thirty more wells down a road in the future? It's very possible. So that road needs to get upgraded so they can haul twenty-four seven. But the ban is in place for a reason.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Scarsen and Counselor Slipchak and then Counselor Krevik.
Just curious, so when you say a good road use agreement, like, so would that mean that there would be no ban? Like they would just haul, like how, how would you determine, you know, how little or much they could haul then? Is that per road then or, like how do we?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Scarsen and all of council, we, we do have, even if there are no road bans, we would work with industry in, in having designated routes. It's not going to be a free-for-all for them. At the end of the day, I had an informal discussion with some members of CNRL supervisors and, and they understand the you break it, you bought it concept of, of our roads. And they don't want to have to spend the money to repair more roads than absolutely necessary. If there is a no road ban decision made, then we would still have specified routes for the, for industry. Based on things like Counselor Fedev was talking about, you know, maybe the oil can't handle it or, or the road is just too soft for that. We have that now with, during our road ban seasons, we have specified routes for industry to travel on during this season. And, and we take into account what is capable of handling that traffic and what isn't. That wouldn't change. We would still work with industry to say, there are no road bans, but here are your haul routes. So having it, I think the, the, there's a fear of no road bans, that it'll be a free-for-all, but, but again, like I said, industry understands that whatever they, whatever they destroy, they repair. And that's an agreement that we've had with them for many years. The road use agreements that we do have are, are fairly robust at this time. They, they do incorporate the, any damage that it's incurred, that you have to, you're responsible for that. We will inspect the road prior, we'll inspect the road post, that kind of thing. And, and we, industry is very receptive to the, to the road use agreements that we do have currently. And, and I don't see that we're ending up in a situation where we're damaging all of our roads without any compensation in it or, or we're putting traffic on roads that can't handle it. Our foremen and managers are more than capable enough to determine which roads can handle the traffic and which can't. And again, I'll reiterate that CNRL doesn't want, or sorry, any industry partners, they don't want to have to repair any more roads than absolutely necessary. So I, I, did I answer your question, sir?
Okay. Counselor Sutchak?
Yeah, the road ban policy, like what you're saying here, designated routes during road ban policy. And if they busted, we're not going to know if, how, if the road's going to handle this or not. And when they do, they're, they're willing to pay for it and help fix it. And then we'll upgrade it to standard so we can handle it next time. And another thing is like we're going to show that we're willing to work with industry and keep promoting business and hopefully bring other ones in here as well. Like we can all work together.
Counselor Krevik and Counselor Fedev?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'm okay with this policy for this year, but moving forward, I agree with Reeve Kalinsky that we should have no road bans as long as the agreements are in place. But for this year, I'm okay with this for now. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we are good partners with, with, with the industry. You know, we've, we've paved a lot of heavy roads that really don't have any, you know, residential, I guess, impact on, not a lot of residents live there. But we, we, you know, we have paved it. We've spent piles of money on making it so they can haul twenty-four seven, right? I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, if, if these things were working, then, then why is industry lobbying like individual councillors, right? If that dialogue is not open with, with our main administration, then, you know, why are they lobbying? And I think there's, there's got to be some give and take and I think we're, we're a little bit away from that. But, you know, I mean, there's, they shouldn't be lobbying the councillors for that. They should be working with our administration to figure out a proper route or, or whatever it is.
And that's what they're stating. I, I can just speak of, like I used to counsel the one area and Devon and CNRL put millions and millions of dollars into pavement so they could come off of a road and, and if we're banning some little road that they can get to the road that they spent millions of putting a pavement along with our millions, I, I don't think a road ban thing is, I think agreements and working with them is a far better, you know, a far better way to go. That's just my opinion. Counselor Sutchak then Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I don't know who's getting lobbied here. I just want to make the statement for the record that I haven't been lobbied by no CNRL people about road bans or nothing.
Counselor Crick?
So with the, this policy that we're debating right now, there's, it's a road ban, it's basically an amendment to the road ban policy, right? So whether we vote in favor of it or against it, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still going to have road bans this year though? It's just how they're, how they're made right now, that's all we're really discussing, right?
So through the Reeve to Counselor Crick, yeah, so the, what we've offered to council is that essentially administration would make the determination on what roads should be banned, when they should be banned. And that's, that's made obviously because people like our new manager of transportation are well experienced in terms of what roads should look like. So there would be, if we went with the administrative recommendation, there would be road bans and that would be determined by administration. The one thing I have and, and Mr. Bespalk and I have spoke about is, in the past, we've done these blanket road bans where the roads are banned from Wolf Lake through to, you know, to Cold Lake. And I'm not sure that that's always, I think we have to have, I think we have to have some more flexibility that there may be roads north of fifty-five on the, on the west side of the MD that don't need a ban quite yet. And there might be other roads south of Muriel Lake, because we have vastly different, you know, the, the storm that came through last weekend, the clear indicator that we have vastly different weather in different parts of the MD. And I think we have to be flexible enough in the transportation department to say, this area has a road ban now, this area doesn't. We haven't done that in the past. It's just been road bans come on and poof, we're done. And I don't know that that's, I, I think it impacts people negatively in places where it doesn't have to. So we're going to kind of be a bit more, a bit more broad-based than, than in the past.
Yeah, deputy.
Yeah, I like those comments because that didn't sound like a road ban. That sounded like a road use agreement where you tell these guys, you work with those guys and say, yeah, well, you need to get here, but, okay, just move a mile north because that road is solid and whatever.
Well, what I'm suggesting through the Reeve to Counselor Swigert is there actually would be a road ban, but maybe, maybe the road ban, it becomes effective Friday, Highway fifty-five south and, and east of Highway forty-one. And so everything west of forty-one and north of fifty-five is fine. We, I think we have to be a bit more flexible in terms of where road bans go because you might need roads banned down south at Muriel Lake, but we don't need roads banned at Wolf Lake. So I think those are, and I, so if we're going to have road bans, and I, I would suggest that if council is comfortable with administration making those with administration making those decisions, then I do think administration has an obligation to our users to not just blanket the whole MD and say we got a road ban, because maybe there's no road ban required on Wolf Lake.
And I 100% agree with you, but again, it's kind of semantics because a road use agreement is identical. It would have done the same thing. So, you know, I'm okay with this road ban policy, but I'd also be okay with, as you suggested half an hour ago, that, you know, we can make a motion to do a trial, either this year or next year. And I like that also. Are you, is it too late this year to trial something different?
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah, I think, I think right now, there's a...
The CIO?
Sorry. Through Counselor Swigert, no, we could, one of the, it's fortuitous that we're talking about this today because in our meeting with transportation yesterday, the question is now coming up. We are on the cusp of road ban season, if not there already. And so if council wanted to do a one-year test project on no road bans, then it would just be simple as creating that as the motion. And if council is good with leaving the policy as we presented it and the amendment to it, then the motion is on the board. It's really, we could go either way at this point, but we are going to need a decision on whether we stay with the current system, move to administratively dealing with road bans, or to no road bans. But we're going to need that today because we're two weeks, we'll be deep in the road ban season by the time council meets again.
Tonight, provincial is off, like, at midnight Wednesday, she's gone. Overweights are gone tonight. Go ahead, Counselor Fredeb.
I like, I like having our guys in somewhat of control of this. These guys travel over roads every single day. They, like, they know it. And with this policy that we have right now, it does give them the flexibility of moving things and talking hand-in-hand with industry to what it is. This way, you know, the direction comes from our administration that know our roads 100% versus having no road bans across the whole MD.
Counselor Kryvjak.
So if we pass this amendment, then does that give the staff and all yourself the ability to, like, basically put a road ban on one specific road if necessary and make an agreement with industry or not?
No, if this amendment, through the reef to Counselor Kryvjak, if this amendment is passed the way it was presented, then administration will make a decision on road bans. Our road use agreements only kick in for the stuff that we do the rest of the year. Roads will be banned, whatever roads they are will be banned. And the road use agreements won't really matter at that point because they'll be banned for everybody. So if this amendment is passed, it'll just come to administration to determine road bans. And our road use agreements, which are separate currently, are for all year round. But this would be specifically for road bans. And those that we have road use agreements with, if this is passed the way it was presented, those we have agreements with would be impacted by the bans. The road use agreement would not be in place because the ban would supersede the road use agreement.
If you pass this, your phone's going to go off the wall. Yes?
No, I don't think so, because I trust our administration to deal with it and to work it with industry. And they won't. I mean, it's, we've had this in the past where, you know, the phones didn't go off. You know, these guys dealt with it, and the Reeve and the deputy, the CEO, are the ones that lifted and did those bans. I think this gives the authority to our professionals to do what they're supposed to do.
Well, I know, I know the traffic, I know the traffic's going to go three times as much. And an empty truck bouncing with oil up and down makes a lot of damage, too. So you're, if you've got nine trucks on the road now, nine times three, 27, Mike? 28? Yeah, you got way more traffic happening. So go ahead.
So, Mr. Reeve, could we, Mr. Reeve, I like the policy, puts it in kind of in your hands. But I don't see why, if we pass this policy, we can't, I'll make another motion after we pass this policy that we do a one-year trial this year and take the road and don't use a road ban. Now, this policy doesn't insist that we automatically put on road bans this year because we already have the policy. We're just changing it to put you in direction of us. I'm saying, let's vote for the, you know, we'll have this, it's still a decent policy. But I'll make another motion after that we pass it to try a one-year trial period this year, starting this year, to not use the road ban.
Thank you, I think it's one or the other.
Yeah, I think it's one or the other.
So, I mean, you know, that's just my opinion. And again, I put a lot of, you know, trust in our guys, and this gives them the ability to do that. And if we do no road bans, then, I mean, it's...
It's the same trust, though. They're going to be the same guys making the decisions on road bans as with road bans.
But having our regions as different as they are, right? And, you know, having stuff that happens at Wolf Lake to what happens at the border road with that road, and a lot of the hauling, that's heavy hauling that's being done there as well, is different, you know? So that would be, you know, no road bans up there where they actually need it, possibly, right?
We're going to, we're going to go with this motion, Counselor Kryvjak.
We can go after lunch.
And then we'll vote on it, and then if it, we'll see where it goes. So Counselor Kryvjak makes the motion that council adopts the policy number 4A002 road ban policy as amended. Everybody straight on that? All those in favor? All those in favor?
You said that already.
Yeah, I know, I'm just counting. All those opposed? Okay, defeated. So we need another motion, or?
So, Mr. Reeve, I'm going to make the motion, as the CIO had mentioned. We'll do a one-year trial of no road bans. Seems like you don't have a road ban anymore. So I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reeve, if I just, for clarification, the motion that was defeated means the amendment was defeated. We still would have the road ban if council wanted to walk away. We still have the road ban committee, which would still consist of the Reeve, myself, and General Manager Bispolko. So it's not as if there's nothing, I just wanted to clarify that point.
And Mr. CIO, that was my point. My point was, 10 minutes ago, we could have approved this policy, and I could have still made the motion to not have a road ban this year as a trial. So, anyway, because I liked the...
Then why did you vote against it? Then why did you vote against it?
Because I don't want that road ban on now.
You could have made another one after, right?
Anyway, so I've made that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Do we have that written yet, or they're coming up with it? Just give them a second.
Now, Mr. Reeve, now I know why the delegation is at 1:00.
Yeah. Lunch is at 2:00.
Yeah. What time are we at now, gentlemen? Okay, we're not too bad.
So I guess, Mr. Reeve, if you wanted the administration to take care of the road bans, then we could have supported that policy and still make the motion that Counselor Swigert was making. But I wasn't clear on that myself, so we could, if you want to revisit that or whatever, it's up to you.
Man, they must be pretty good, if you guys can hear me tapping. Unbelievable. I look over and it's like you guys aren't even listening, they're just like...
Mike, can you hear me?
I was wondering who's... All right, Counselor Swigert makes the motion that council directs administration to implement a pilot program indicating no road bans and direct administration to ensure road use agreements are in place for a one-year term and report back to council results of the program for a permanent decision.
Mr. Reeve, if I could just, as I read that, I was just, road use agreements, I suggested modifying that motion. Road use agreements are in place for major industry. There's no way we would get road use agreements for every farmer hauling a load of grain. That would just be, that would just be impossible.
Okay.
For major industry.
And how, how would you define major industry? Gravel hauling, would that be part of that major? And that's kind of what I'm afraid of, some of this stuff might fall through. Define major.
Through the reef, to answer Counselor Fredeb's question, I would suggest something like gravel hauling, a log haul, something to that effect, that's industry-based, that would be considered major industry.
To which we also already have agreements with many of those players already.
That is correct, yes.
Counselor Fredeb.
So is the issue that we're not following up on those, like, on those road use agreements? Is that, maybe that's the part that's falling apart?
Through the reef, no, we're up on all of our road use agreements. We monitor where the, where industry is hauling on these road use agreements. We are monitoring these locations all the time.
Okay, you might want to call me later on on that one that I had six phone calls from within a week last year. So I'd love to talk to you about that one.
Sure.
All right. Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Kryvjak.
So just to be clear, then, does that mean that, and maybe it's, I might just be asking a silly question because I don't know any better, but... So industry, if they have a road use agreement and they basically wrecked the road using it, are they still responsible to fix it? And have they always been responsible anyways?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, our road use agreements offer the, and some of them are slightly different, word is slightly different, but essentially they have the opportunity to either pay us for the repair or to repair the road themselves.
Because even at the, like, when I got out to the highway this morning on my way here, Baytex has been drilling a bunch of wells at the end of 434 there by Highway 28. And the roads, it's been in rough shape for a couple of weeks. And I understand that it's spring, there's been a lot, but there's, they're putting mud on the road every day, which is, as long as they're going to be fixing it, it's all good.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? That one was a long time ago. I do. Yeah. Let's take a five-minute break. Hey, welcome back. We're just going to have a little update from Esther here to see where we're at.
We were able to dig into the financial records and previous grant records with regards to the museums and their annual funding. From 2010 to 2017, Counselor Kryvjak was correct. The amount was $17,500 that we provided to them on an annual basis. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Kryvjak.
But I'm 99.9% sure he said $15,000. All right, all right.
However, on April 25, 2018, at a regular meeting of council as promotion 18.250 by Counselor Kryvjak, there was an increase in the annual grant amount from $17,005 to $25,000.
Oh, man. Who made that motion, I need my hearing.
Counselor Kryvjak made that motion.
Yes. Oh.
So from 2018 to 2022, we've been providing them with $25,000.
Are you 100% sure of that?
I am 200% sure of that one.
Mr. Reeve, are you aware of that motion? I wasn't sure.
I think I must have been missing that day. I don't think I was here.
I don't know if you were here even, Mike.
The Reeve made a mistake and used my name.
I must have, yeah, we'll have to call him on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the update. Oh, that's, that was enjoyable. Sorry. Yes, Mr. Bispolko, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reeve. This RFD is for the Barrier Lake Outlet Drainage Project. At a regular meeting of council on February 23, 2022, the 2022 Drainage Program, or Drainage Project Priority Map was presented to council for approval. Out of a discussion arising from the RFD presentation, administration was tasked to gather background information regarding Barrier Lake drainage concerns and relative, relevant aspects for discussion. Barrier Lake discharges through registered drainage plan held by the town of Bonneville, Plan Number 8023136, which discharges into the MD-held registered drainage ditch within Muriel Creek Drainage System, Plan Number 8021818. Ducks Unlimited Canada operates and maintains a water control structure in the form of an inverted culvert located at Northwest 15615, west of the Fourth Meridian. The purpose of the structure was to ensure Barrier Lake-held water for wildlife habitat and wetland preservation. In 2020-2021, under the Water Act Authorization 5049154, drainage ditch maintenance works were executed within Barrier Lake Drainage Ditch, excluding the Ducks Unlimited Inverted Culvert. In anticipation of ongoing needs of maintenance, the Muriel Creek Drainage System and its tributaries, the MD put together an extensive scope, long-term approval application submitted to the regulators in early 2021. Further details regarding the Barrier Lake Drainage are appended to this RFD titled Barrier Lake Subdivision and Appendix B. The MD environmental team has obtained an AEP permit to conduct maintenance on three specific locations in the outlet drainage of Barrier Lake. To date, two of the three locations have been addressed. This has now been updated. The third location was the Ducks Unlimited Level Control Device to be removed. That has since been removed in the last, I think it was last week we removed that. So all three locations specified in the AEP permit have been addressed already. A permanent AEP approval for maintenance of the entire outlet drainage ditch was applied for in early 2021. This application is now being reviewed by Alberta Environment Protection. So there's some reference to some provincial legislation. It's under the Water Act and DFO. And we're recommending that council accepts the Barrier Lake Outlet Drainage Project update as information. And if there are any questions, the environmental coordinator, Conrad Shipclark, is here. If there are any questions, he can answer some technical ones if you have.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, yes, Counselor Kryvjak.
We received that report as information, and I also want to say thank you to the staff for doing what they can there to help with that lake level. It's very important to the residents in that area to have that lake level down, so I appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kryvjak makes a motion that council accepts Barrier Lake Outlet Drainage Project update as information. Any discussion on this? Yes, go ahead.
So just to be 100% clear, so the water was being held back in Barrier Lake?
That is correct. With the inverted culvert, it made sure that it had at least a level. When it went over that, it would flow, but they wanted to maintain a certain amount, a certain level in Barrier Lake.
So do you have, like, do you have a list of other places this is going on in the MD? Like, can we fix drainage issues by opening up? Anything like that? I mean, I'm just curious, like, is it happening in other places as well? Or do you know?
Through the reef to Counselor Skarson, we do have some areas in the MD that our water is being held up in some drainage courses. Some are registered, some are not. We are dealing with the registered drainage courses currently. Some of these blockages are due to just biological blockages, like trees and... just biological blockages like trees and, and debris, like leaves, that kind of thing, grasses. But this one in particular was caused by Ducks Unlimited putting a, a flow control structure there. That's the one that we, that's the one we removed. Are there any others in the, in the M.D.? I don't know, Conrad, do you know if there are any others? Okay, so, yeah, to our knowledge, the only blockages that are, that are like this, or there are no other control structures like this that we could address? The only other ones that are blocking anything would be, like I said, biological blocks like grasses, trees, twigs, sticks, that kind of thing. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Deputy Reeve Swager, go ahead. Yeah, because I, I was getting, being contacted by somebody who lives at Barrier Lake or at Emerald Estates. And so this will solve their problem, hopefully, is that what you're hoping, by removing that culvert?
You know what, I'll get Conrad to speak on the, on the levels and what, what removing this culvert would do.
And then I, I did have a question about, I'm not sure the history of that Ducks Unlimited structure or that inverted culvert or whatever, but was, was that put in there before Emerald Estates was designed and built?
Mr. Shipclark can.
Yeah, thanks.
Good morning, everybody, is this on? Yes. To Mr. Swager's second question through the reef, I'm not sure exactly when it was put in. That's something we can look into if you're super interested, but we, it's gone now, so the, it's out of there. The first question regarding whether or not this will help drain the lake. The intent was never to drain the lake, but we don't want to see the levels coming up to where it's affecting people's homes and driveways and into their yards and potentially into their basement structures, so at this point, that's all we had approval to do is to remove those four, or sorry, three points of bottleneck on that system. Under the new Water Act approval that we were looking at getting in DAPP zero 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 three one one three, which actually has been approved since, we got the approval, I think, day before yesterday. That'll allow us to make adjustments to ditch depth or sediment blockages as needed, but we're hoping, based on survey data and elevations, that removing that weir will at least, at least gain us a foot, a foot of more free board.
That was just a culvert that acted like a weir.
That's essentially what it was for, yeah, to promote duck habitat and waterfowl habitat.
Right. So can I just ask one more than that Barrier Lake Ditch? It says Barrier Lake Ditch, red, red arrow there. Is, are we maintaining that, are we cleaning that, or is that, we still need federal approvals to? I'm looking at the, I guess, Appendix Eight drawing or photo, aerial photo. And at the end of that structure, the Ducks Unlimited structure, there's a red, a red line that runs to Muriel Creek. And it says Barrier Lake Ditch, and I assume, or Barrier Lake Ditch? And I just wonder if, if we're trying to maintain that ditch, or is?
Through the reef, Counsel Swager, that, the red line is actually the ditch held by the town of Bonneville. We went in with Ag Services in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one with the Water Act approval and removed four blockages with the permission of the town. So generally, we're not maintaining that, but because we knew we had issues at Emerald Estates and Barrier Lake, we had to went in and gone and removed those, sorry, three, three blockages with the third one being this culvert this year.
So the big fix will be the culvert removal, which you've already done.
We're hoping, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
I'm just, you spurred a question there, I'm just curious, how does, why does a town want a ditch out that far out of town? Like, I don't understand how that works.
That was kind of our question too, and we sort of found it out in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. It was part of their original drainage where their historical sewage systems and everything ran through Jesse Lake and then through Barrier Lake and then out into our Muriel Creek system. Since then, they've built the ponds down and to the west end of Charlotte Lake and have changed their system, but historically, Bonneville used to dump from Jesse into Barrier.
All right. Mr. Reeve.
Yes. I, I also would just would add that I've received some calls, and I know Counsel Crick has received some calls regarding the town's snow dump. Their snow dump, which is just to the east of the Ball Diamonds on the north side of the road, that will eventually work its way into Barrier Lake, and I received some calls worried about, you know, increased level of Barrier Lake, et cetera, et cetera. Well, those snow dumps and all of our snow dumps are approved by Alberta Environment. So they've already looked at any impact that a snow dump may cause, both from an environmental perspective with the stuff that's in the snow, salt, et cetera, et cetera, and in terms of where that water would go once it melts. So if anybody does receive calls, those snow dump areas are approved by AEP.
Thank you.
For clarification, that's, M.D.'s snow dumps are approved. Yeah, the town ones are working with Alberta Environment to make sure that they're up to compliance, as far as I know, currently.
Counsel Sifte.
Yeah, so going forward on this Barrier Lake Ditch, you can have a maintenance program where they continue keeping sediment out of it, because sediment will build up in there as your flow goes.
Yeah, and that was part of the application that we made under DAPPL zero three one one three, and again, has since been approved. Now, literally, all we're waiting for is the DFO green light from the Federal Department of Fisheries and Oceans. It was actually submitted to them in August of two thousand and twenty-one, and we're having a meeting with them tomorrow to kind of get the fire lit, to get that going. They usually lean on the provincial side to give us an approval first, and they kind of piggyback on that if the province fisheries is happy with it, then DFO is probably happy with it. So we were initially waiting on the Alberta Environment approval, and we are looking at the fisheries approval shortly. And then we'll be able to do all of the, like you said, sediment removal and beaver dam removal and woody debris. There's a scope that we had applied for in section, if I can find it. Sorry, section four point one. So beaver dam removal, sediment removal, woody debris removal, culvert maintenance and removal, bridge maintenance, graminoid and woody shrub vegetation removal, and as needed with direction from council and working with council, historical crossing and illegal crossing removal as well.
Counsel Sifte.
Yeah. So in regards to cost and maintenance, since this is the town of Bonneville, so are they going to cost share in the maintenance part of the their, their creek?
Counsel Fidou through the reef, that's out of my scope, so I get approvals, that's a question for Brian.
Thank you for that question. The answer to that question is, I don't know. These agreements for us to put the application in were done before I had any involvement in, in any type of conversation between the town and the M.D., so I don't know what, what was discussed at that point, so.
Okay, just a question, thank you.
We can look into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Deputy Reeve Swager, then Counsel Crick. It was two questions, or two, I guess, comments, questions. Yeah, I would suggest that we look into acquiring access to that so that we can maintain it. It affects our residents, not theirs anymore, because they're not dumping sewer anymore into it, so. So that's one comment. I don't know how you go about getting that transferred to us, but it's really, it's ours, it's ours and it's affecting our citizens, so. My other comment was, I would ask for maybe in the future more information on the Muriel Creek projects that the M.D. took upon themselves, probably like seven or eight years ago. We did a, had a study done, drone flights, we were cleaning parts of Muriel Creek. I, I never actually heard if we'd finished doing that entire project, you know, cleaning the Muriel Creek and getting that water flowing all the way to the Beaver River, whatever it was, but it'd be nice to have feedback on that.
Thank you for that, through the reef to Counsel Swager. That was an initiative brought forward by Ag Services. I'm guessing that they could probably give you an update on, on what was done with that project.
Sure, it'd be just nice if we, are we doing more or are we finished or whatever, just an update would be nice.
Again, that's an initiative brought forward by Ag Services, so I would, I would probably defer that question to, to the general manager of Ag.
When he's back.
Yeah.
Just wondered what the relationship between the lake levels of Jesse Lake and Barrier Lake are, if one lake affects the other, or if they're totally independent of each other.
Based on historical survey data, the lakes are actually, look like they're pretty close to each other, as you can see on this Appendix A map. Elevation levels of Jesse Lake elevation is five forty-nine above sea level and Barrier Lake is about the same. Currently, there's no, at least it doesn't seem there's a continuous trench or open ditch between Barrier Lake and Jesse Lake, but it looks like there was historically. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but the elevations are very much the same. It's pretty flat out there, all of it's pretty flat, we're flat all the way to Alexander by Sawchuck's residence there.
Okay. We have the motion that was made by Counsel Crick. No more discussion, all those in favor? Carrie. Seven point six? Or do we have another? Are you just backing up?
No, that's, just getting, getting everything ready for the next one here, so.
That's that amendment, right, or the?
The emergent item?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reeve. This one, this RFD is for the two thousand and twenty-two cold mix tender, tender award. As part of the annual cold mix program, administration issued a tender on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, via the Alberta Purchasing Connection to solicit bids for mixing of sixty thousand metric tons of cold mix product and five thousand metric tons of patching material. The tender scope was for the supply of oil, mixing of aggregate and stockpiling. The aggregate was to be supplied by the M.D. The tender closed March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and five bids were received in Appendix A. The lowest compliant tender price was submitted by E Construction Limited for four million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars exclusive of GST. The two thousand and twenty-two operating budget passed by council had a total of three point three million dollars allocated for road materials costs, which included both road, road cold mix and patching material. Tender prices increased drastically from what was received in two thousand and twenty-one. Reasons for the increased price for the tender include higher grade of oil than was, than was used in two thousand and twenty-one, increased price of oil supplied and increased operational costs for the bidders. Some options include increase the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget road materials cost by one million dollars to allow sixty-five thousand metric tons of aggregate to be mixed. Option number two, leave the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget road materials cost as originally approved and reduce the amount of cold mix projects for two thousand and twenty-two. Option three, leave the cold, two thousand and twenty-two operating budget road materials cost as originally approved and perform road mixing of aggregate. Costs associated with this method would be purchase of the oil from a supplier and delivery to the oil, or of the oil to site. Items for council to consider, administration realized after, or admin, administration realized that having the product mixed prior to placement increases the uniformity of the product, thereby decreasing the time and costs associated with mixing of aggregate and oil on the road. Road projects have a quicker completion time with pre-mixed material versus onsite road mixed material. Road mixing would reduce the overall cost, but may create logistical issues with the delivery on short notice. The cost of oil alone for sixty thousand tons of aggregate is approximately three point two million dollars plus delivery. With sixty thousand tons mixed this year, there may be a surplus of material at the end of the two thousand and twenty-two season, depending on the number of projects approved by council in two thousand and twenty-two. And if the price of oil continues to rise over the next year and we do not use the whole sixty thousand tons in two thousand and twenty-two, we will reduce the amount of material required for two thousand and twenty-three as we can use the material made in two thousand and twenty-two for two thousand and twenty-three projects. The cost of, the cost of this would come from cash flow reserves. And the recommended action by administration is that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of one million dollars towards the two thousand and twenty-two road materials, road material cost budget funded from cash flow reserves. And furthermore, the council approved the award of the two thousand and twenty-two cold mix tender for the mixing of sixty-five thousand metric tons of cold mix and patching material to E Construction Limited in the amount of four million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded from the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget. The, the first part of the motion was that it be funded for the, we put a million dollars from cash flow reserves into the operating budget, and then the second part is to pay it out of the operating budget. Does that clarify? Okay.
Yeah.
So don't we, so don't we mix a lot of that ourselves, or no?
Through the reef to Counsel Sarsen, no. The last couple of years, we've, we've contracted somebody to mix it in the yard, we stockpile it, and we take it out from there. Which the, the trucking is the same, because we would have been loading up gravel at the same rate and hauling it out to the road and then mixing it on the road.
So we did, we hire someone to come in and use our gravel to mix, they buy the oil, and then they just use their equipment to mix it, is that how it works?
Through the reef to Counsel Sarsen and all of council, yes, that, that's the way it is. The contract is for a contractor to come in, set up their equipment, purchase the oil, use our gravel, mix it into that, into what we need, and then put it on a stockpile.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Swager. Interesting, this is maybe not a great question, but it begs the question, you know, we, we, if we're going to do this forever, we're a municipality. Is it cheaper for us to event, you know, to buy that equipment and have it on site and do it over the next hundred years?
Through the reef to Counsel Swager, I haven't done the study of, of what the equipment would cost. Operations, the staffing, you know, you, you have to have some technical staff that know what they're doing with that equipment in order to, to operate it, so I haven't done that.
It's just a question, because it's like, you know, who knows what the markup is, right? And maybe it's worth looking at, just a question, just a suggestion. But else, maybe you do look at it.
Fair enough, I can, I can put that on a list of things to do, absolutely.
So in the last few years, we haven't done, we haven't done no road mixing whatsoever?
For the reven and to all the council, in the last couple of years that, that I'm aware of, the only mixing that we've done on the road would be i- if we ripped something that had a good oil content in it and we just needed a splash just to, to relay it, that would be the only, to my knowledge, that would be the only road mixing that we had done. For full rip and relay projects that we have done over the past couple of years, no, that's, that's all been pre-made and we haul it out.
And I, like, in the fall there, I went through some new, some new ones that you put down in the patch trucks or patching. Did we have a bad batch, or like, it just, it seemed like, you know, brand-new roads and we're patching them already, what, what happened with that mix? Was it like, just kind of putting you on the spot, sorry?
Fair enough. Through council, previous administration decided that, that would, the oil that we were using was going to be sufficient. It, it seemed, it seemed good, but the, the application of it and all things being equal, it just didn't hold up as we had thought, as administration had thought.
Because, yeah, when I looked at it, it didn't seem like it had no bite to it, it had no, like, you couldn't, you couldn't do this to it and it wouldn't stick together.
And that's, and that's the reason why some of the increase in the cost is because we went to a different oil that we had used a couple of years ago, which proved way better. So in, instead of trying to save some money with a lower grade oil, we went back to what we know worked well. That increased the price slightly from last year, but we're confident that the mixture that we're going to use this year is going to be far superior than what was last year.
Yep, was your hand up or a seal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve, yeah, I, I guess I'll be a little less tactful than Mr. Bisbolko. The previous general manager tried saving some money last year, we bought oil that, and we had trouble with that cold mix product all year last year on every road it went on. We had Foreman phoning me and complaining, calling, calling Mr. Bisbolko saying, I don't know if this stuff is going to stick. We tried mixing on the road with a, with extra oil, but we saved money on the oil last year, but in the long run, I think last year's savings are going to probably cost us.
The road, the road I saw is just, was a disaster. And the guys that were patching it told me it's a brand-new road, and I'm like, man, that looked like it was ancient. Yeah, go ahead.
So the, so what you've asked for here is basically, we'll cover what you have for projects, like, do you, is that, and what is it all being used for? So patchwork, some dust control, like, are you actually doing some rows with this stuff, or?
Through the reef to Counsel Sarsen and all of council. The amount that we're asking for is, last year we had fifty thousand ton of material. The patching material is five thousand ton, that's what we use, it's, it's a different product, so, but the sixty thousand ton that we were, were asking for, it's ten thousand ton more than we had last year, that is going.
That is going to be used for the rip and relay projects that we have. We're still, excuse me, we're still compiling that list and we'll bring that list to council here. I believe it's in the next couple of council meetings that we'll have that rip and relay list done for you. But that's what it'll be used for, is the rip and relay projects that we have scheduled for twenty twenty-two.
Counselor, oh, sorry.
No, I just, I just had one comment that, I mean, we've kind of talked about this in the past and with all council, I guess, is that prices are high, you do less roads, right? I mean, you know, when the price is low, you hammer on it, so.
Through the reef, to answer that question, you're absolutely right, and that was one of the thoughts that were being batted around during the discussion that the C.A.O. and I had. Doesn't look like oil is gonna get much cheaper even for next year, so let's say we did cut back a little bit on our road projects this year, but still have that in inventory. We can use that next year when we don't know what the price of oil would be next year. So, we could still do both, but in an effort of potential cost savings next year, maybe we bite the bullet and have this much material made this year when we don't know what the price of oil will be next year.
Counselor Slipchuk.
Yeah, my comment is, looking at these bids, like, there's quite a big variance in them. And we're definitely getting the same product on all these bids, like, this seems huge to me.
Through the reef, to Councilor Slipchuk, actually, in terms of tenders that we see all the time, these are not that far apart. You know, we're from four point two to four point six. That is, we're within ten percent on all the bids. You know, from the, that is actually, I actually consider that to be a reasonably close bid.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, there was an amendment, and as you can see, one, one did, was it six point six million? And then, the day of the tender opening, the other day, they came in with an amendment to drop two million dollars, one point nine million from that. But in, but being ten percent bid spread is actually a pretty close bid.
Okay.
I would also add that, you know, we're heading towards a world here right now where we could be a million dollars a kilometer for cold mix road and two million dollars a kilometer for an ACP road. I think this is a two-part problem. One, obviously, is the question that's in front of council regarding the million-dollar ask to complete the tender. The other question, and Councilor Scarsen bang on, is where, what is our long-term road projects gonna be? And what is council prepared to do in terms of generating, we can take the revenue, we can take the million dollars out of cash flow reserves and put it the operating budget, but that's another million dollars out of cash flow reserves. So are we gonna continue with the same fulsome road projects that we're doing at these increased costs, or should we be backing down? And I think when Mr. Bispalko comes back with our road projects at the next, one of the next couple of council meetings, I think that's really gonna be the issue for council. This is just kind of what's in your face, but the bigger question is, where are we going the next two to three years with these road projects? Because there's some big projects on the books that are going to be significantly expensive with these increased rates. And with the new coalition in Ottawa, I don't anticipate that oil prices are gonna sink any.
Yeah, Counselors, you wanna comment with that?
I got an air question. Okay, so, in regards to the product, do you guys do, do you have a test, form a test policy that's acceptable for your standards? It's like you said last year, we didn't, the product wasn't good. So if we have a test, something about a test system where we can make sure we're getting the right product from the supplier?
Through the reef, to Councilor Slipchuk, we do engage a couple of consulting firms. J.R. Payne being one, Wood Environmental being the other, where we send a mix, we send a sample of our gravel. They'll give us a mixed design of what should be used, how much should be used for this type of gravel that we're mixing, and with what oil we're using. They give us what the content is, so we're mixing about a five-point, this is all based on about a five point three percent mix ratio. So, if we have to go more, let's say the gravel is a little more, it requires a little more gravel, then that might go, or sorry, a little more oil, that might go up to five point four percent-ish, or it might go down. So, yes, to answer your question, we are doing our due diligence in creating a mixed design with the aggregate that we have and the oil that we're gonna be using so that these people can follow it and we get the proper product. And once it starts coming off the belt, then we can start laying it and try to make some adjustments if needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just having a sidebar discussion here, but if we actually had done proper due diligence last year, would we have not had that problem? I'm not sure what you're saying. I understand your answer, but it's.
But it's not his.
You know what, through the reef, to Councilor Swiger, I know that there were the mixed designs done. We did send, we did send samples of the product away for retesting. To speak as to why it didn't work, I can't, I didn't make the decision.
All I'm saying is, I just hope we don't do the same thing this year, right? I mean, as long as we have good, solid test standards, then you'd think it would have, it always would meet the spec, but obviously, we tested last year, it didn't meet the spec, but we used it anyway, so.
But I think that product wasn't gonna fail even before it started.
And through the reef, to council, I would also add that we have, we have what I would call early warning devices at the shop, and that's the foreman, and the foreman all unanimously last year said the product that we're buying last year was the wrong product. So, and those foremen were ignored, and as a result, the new product came in and now we're having the issues that we're having. So our guys all last year said, what are we doing? Why are we buying this? So we have, we have our early warning devices and they weren't, they weren't listened to last year. This year, I think everybody's comfortable, because this goes back to the spec we used to use.
How much, sorry, go ahead.
And if I may piggyback on the C.A.O.'s comments, yeah, when I chatted with my team about this, I said, okay, we know what doesn't work, what works. They said, the stuff we had two years ago looks fantastic, and it laid great, it was perfect. I said, we should build our tender based on what we used two years ago, if we know that worked. The gravel is, for all intents and purposes, the same. Let's build our spec based on what we know works. Again, that increased the price of the oil in the tenders, but we're confident that this type of, this type of oil is going to give us a better, a better end product.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Fadid.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Brian and his team. I wanna thank him for listening to the, to the foreman. There was, you know, there was a subdivision that was done by my place, and they probably used about thirty percent more cold mix, and labor went through the roof because they're trying to pack it. It was almost like it was sand. It was kind of crumbling, but they've got it all figured out now.
So, what are we doing in that subdivision this, like, what do we do now, or is it acceptable now?
It seemed, it seemed good now, like, they added quite a bit of stuff to it and it seemed to get some heat in it and does bind. But initially, it was, it was flowing too much.
For the reef and to all of council, we will be monitoring all of the areas that we put the cold mix on last year. We'll be monitoring them closely to see how they weather during the winter, how they're going to perform during the spring thaw, that kind of thing. And again, to answer your question, if they need repair, they're gonna get repaired.
Do it quick, rip and relay.
We just can't leave them the way they are. And if that means that we rip them up and perhaps give another splash of oil, we'll check and see what oil is compatible with what's there. We might be able to fix it, we may not, we're not sure. We'll have to deal with that, and I hate to see, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah.
I hate to say we'll wait and see, but that might be the only option that we have at this point. But we want to repair the roads in a, for a good usable condition.
How much of this product do we still have on hand?
For all of council, very little. We may have four or five thousand ton, but that's gonna be pushed aside, I think, and make way for the, for the new product.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve?
Hot mix, cold mix discussion, we've had that over the years, and we've been told by different managers that hot mix really isn't very much more expensive, but it'll last ten times longer or whatever, whatever the numbers were. So, can we have that discussion again?
So, through the reef, to Councilor Swiger and all of council, interesting question. When I was in charge of transportation at Lakavish County back in two thousand and twelve, we, at the time, Stuart and Weir, who was, who's now been swallowed up into other engineering companies, did a study for us. And the ACP is actually less expensive over a thirty-year period of the life typically of a road than cold mix product is. It's the upfront expense with ACP that typically tends to be the issue. To lay an ACP road with a base, et cetera, et cetera, and then depending whether you wanna do a single lift, which would be typical over secondary highways, or double lift, which would be typical over primary highways, it is more expensive upfront, but we found through the study that Stuart and Weir did for us that it's about a thirty percent saving over thirty years on ACP roads, because all ACP roads really require after that is crack filling. Rarely doing patchwork on an asphalt concrete pavement. So it is, the kicker for most municipalities is the upfront cost, and that's the, it's currently, you'd be, and Mr. Bispalko is smarter about this than I am, but currently, you're probably slightly over a million dollars a kilometer to do an ACP road, and we do a cold mix road for significantly less than that. But our long-term maintenance on the cold mix roads eats away at that over time.
Yeah, I was gonna add to that. We've ripped and relayed, you know, the same road multiple times, you know, over like, a year, you may rip and relay the same section twice because it's just, it's not working, so, yeah.
Well, to, sorry, through the reef, to Councilor Swiger's comment, that might be a base problem and not the product problem. And that's, regardless if you put ACP or cold mix, it is bound to fail if your base is not supporting what's on top. So, your comment is valid, however, it may not be the product on the top, that's the issue.
Yeah, the problem, if you put pavement on a poor base, now you've got a problem, because you're not gonna rip up.
I know, but I've been, I've been kind of, you know, voicing the opinion, do it once, do it right. And so, you know, don't even lay cold mix on a road that doesn't have a proper base. We're just wasting time and wasting money.
And through the reef, fair comment, and that's what I am looking at before we even do any of that, is what is the base like? Do we spend the money on overlaying this or rip and relaying this when the base needs some work? And if it does, I have no problem asking the foreman and the managers, okay, what's it gonna take to fix this? If it's digging out a soft spot, putting in some gravel, well, that's what we have to do. I'm not, I'm not for putting Band-Aids and Band-Aid in Band-Aid. It's not, it's not productive.
Okay, Counselor Slipchuk, go ahead.
I got one last question. So, to ensure that contractors mixing the product right prior to getting it out and putting on the, applying it, do we do spot checks or anything like on that, that there's no issues on the mixing end prior to being put on the road?
Through the reef, to Councilor Slipchuk, that's a good question. That's part of our QC to make sure that the quality control of the product, where we make sure that what they're giving us is what we're asking for. So, absolutely, we'll send those away to, again, the two consulting firms that we've had in the past to make sure that it is what we want.
Yeah, we need some kind of a motion. I just had a question to the C.A.O. Is there anywhere we can steal a million dollars if we wanted to go forward from somewhere else in the budget instead of taking from the reserves, which are that are very depleted already?
Through the reef, or to the reef, and to all of council, it's, the reserves are the reserves. It's one bank account that's segmented. We take, if we found a million somewhere else, it's still, it's still coming from reserves. We could come back to council in a couple of weeks and suggest that the reserves be replaced, that the cash flow reserve be replaced from another reserve. You know, the one that jumps to mind would be the two point seven five million that had been placed in there for the Capella building that now with the sale is not required. We could move that reserve back into the cash flow reserves. But other than that, there's, it all comes from the same pot, but.
Okay, well, I'm gonna need a motion, yeah.
Well, I mean, I would just, I would like to see it stay in the budget that we presented. I mean, we've been talking lots about stealing money from the reserves, right? And, you know, what does that look like, at least? You know, I thought maybe you could have brought that here to say, this is what it looks like if we actually stayed in budget. I don't know, I don't even know the, you know, I could probably find it, I guess, but the plan for the cold mix, right? What happens if we didn't have a million dollars' worth, right?
Okay, through the reef, to Councilor Scarsen. We, in preliminary discussions on the administrative end, we anticipated we would need sixty thousand ton for what was coming up. So, we did fifty thousand ton last year, so we anticipated a little bit more. If we cut that back, we're probably looking at forty-ish thousand ton. So we would be twenty percent less than what we anticipated to do for this year. So, if you base it on what we did last year, twenty percent less than what we did last year, so.
And Mr. Reeve, through council and to Councilor Scarsen, I certainly don't disagree with that. My suggestion would be that we, is that we, half of what our road projects are gonna be this year, do is thirty thousand, purchase this sixty thousand, and next year, we would already, we'd have price-protected ourselves with another thirty thousand ton of cold mix product. If we drop the product and we use what we need this year, we could be purchasing this at an even increased cost again next year. So I think there should be some thought given to whether purchasing this year, do we believe the prices are gonna increase for tender next year, or prices are gonna drop? I understand it's a, it's a bit of a guessing game. But if we lessen the amount of work we did this year to say thirty thousand ton worth and plan for thirty thousand ton worth next year, then we'd have at least price-protected ourselves for one year.
Yes. Mr. Reeve, I agree with that. I don't think the price of oil, everybody's paying more for everything now, and the price of oil is not gonna drop, I don't think, next year. So I think we'd be safer this year to go ahead and do this, and.
Well, let's make a motion then. Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion to go ahead. Let's see, it's probably number one.
So I just got a, I got a question then. So if, I mean, if you're looking at, this is just for the material to do all these road projects, so now are you gonna be coming back because you're gonna need more money for manpower and diesel and all that kind of stuff too, to actually do the work?
Through the reef, to Councilor Scarsen, good question, but no, we can, we can do what we can. Again, if we're cutting back our road projects to have a little bit of surplus in reserve for next year, we won't need any additional manpower or equipment to continue what we're doing.
I just have, I mean, oil could be up next year, who knows? I have a hard time saying that we're buying oil at a hundred and ten dollars a barrel to save money. I mean, I don't see it myself, but I mean, who knows, I guess, right? I know oil companies are doing well, but no one wants oil at this price either, so.
Okay, so, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. We're gonna break for lunch now, ladies and gentlemen. Counsel? Where are we at?
Seven six three, seven point six point three.
Seven point six three, okay. Who's in charge of that?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I am. Seven, point, six point three is the Lakeland Industry Committee Association committee appointment request. Administration has received a letter from LICA requesting the M.D. Bonneville to appoint a representative to the watershed management plan committee. The purpose of LICA's watershed management plan committee is to assist in the development and oversight of LICA's integrated watershed management plan. Previously, M.D. environmental staff have attended these committee meetings, but were never officially appointed to the committee as representatives. If council decides to proceed with LICA's request and fill in the open committee position with an M.D. representative, administration believes that it would be more appropriate for a member of council to fill that position. Attached for your review is the letter request from LICA. Our administrative recommendation that council appoints counselor to the Lakeland Industry and Committee of watershed management plan committee effective immediately for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty twenty-two term. You can see the council options there, one through three, and with that, I'll leave that for council to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
I'll discuss. I'll discuss because I, I actually sit on L I C A. Um, the, uh, integrated watershed management plan, I think, started up about two years ago, and so we've had members from, uh, environmental group on that committee. They don't meet very often. They're probably, they probably meet once every couple of months or whatever when called upon, but, um, they've kind of already invested about two years' worth of their work into that study and, and, you know, any one of us counselors could maybe sit on that committee, but, um, they're kind of looking for more, um, environmental information, uh, kind of, I would say more administrative kind of information on, on land use bylaws and municipal development plans and that sort of thing. How, so they can integrate that into their, uh, into their watershed plan. So kind of, I guess, up to council, but I think, uh, if we wanted comments from the L I C A folks, they're there to, to give us that feedback. Did you have any?
Yes.
I just, I think, uh, there, you know, there must be a reason why administration's recommending for
Council member.
Council member to do it. Uh, was there a reason for that recommendation, Mr. Hogan?
Uh, thank you, Mr., uh, thank you through the reef to, uh, um, to Council Fideev and the rest of council. If you look at the, uh, Integrated Watershed Management Plan Committee, terms of reference, uh, you'll see, uh, uh, you can kind of read your way through that, but the, it's, uh, it's a fairly high level, um, although it does some technical work. It's also a fairly high-level governance committee to which I understand other counselors from other municipalities also sit on. We're certainly not opposed to having a M D of Bonneville representative sit on that committee, but, um, uh, um, you know, when I, when I read things like develop key watershed concerns, priorities, goals, recommendation, targets, implementation, that sounds to me like something that a counselor should be doing and reporting back to council. Um, uh, the key development of the I W M P in alignment with L I C A's strategic plan and budget, that sounds to me like a governance issue. Um, uh, uh, so I just, when I look at it and I read the terms of reference and the fact that other counselors from other municipalities sit on that board, I would highly recommend, uh, that a counselor, uh, that a counselor fill that position for that reason.
Thank you.
And I, and I hear that. I just, I'm, I guess I'm a bit surprised that we had, uh, environmental folks on that for two years now, and there's probably a year left in this committee, and, and we're not having that anymore. So I, I'm concerned that, I'm not sure why they were kind of taken off that committee. I have no idea why.
Yeah, Council Fideev, yeah, just you want, after Council Fideev, one second.
It's one of those things where I've never heard a report from them. That's, that's a, that's, that's one good reason.
You've never heard, sorry, what?
A report from our administration on this, where somebody from council was said they would bring back a report and, and just tell the rest of us what's happening, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could have asked for that, I suppose. I'm going to ask L I C A, uh, just to come up for a minute and just.
And, and Mr. Reeve, if you'd like a representative from L I C A to speak, there, we, we do need under procedure, by law, a motion of council to allow.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we allow L I C A to speak.
Okay, I have a motion to allow L I C A to speak. Any, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, okay. Sorry, forgot your name again.
It's okay. Uh, my name is Christina Morris. I'm the executive director of L I C A. Uh, so, Mr. Reeve and counselors, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, just, just to provide a little bit of a background, I'm not familiar with, you know, why an environmental person was appointed rather than a council member. Uh, unfortunately, I can't really speak to that. However, uh, the purpose of having a representative at the table is because we're developing this guidance document for our decision makers. So for example, uh, such as the municipal district of Bonneville. And so essentially, once we develop the plan and throughout the process, we're, we're trying to build a plan in which you will support. So, uh, Kayla Hallam, our environmental coordinator, is leading this, uh, committee. And so I know she had previously done a delegation to present the I W M P, um, first draft to you guys. And so, um, it's, it's very pertinent, especially in this year, because this is the final year of the project, uh, in which we're developing the plan. So we currently have just hosted our second round of engagement sessions, and, uh, we just sent, um, the, the M D of Bonneville council, uh, our draft one document based on feedback provided, and we are currently seeking, uh, council to review it and make sure whether there's changes to be made, uh, whether there's other considerations or feedback to be received so we can incorporate it to the second draft. Once we have the second draft developed, then we're going to have our final engagement sessions, uh, sometime in June, uh, to which a final draft will be made and again will be sent back to ensure that we, we can, um, receive your support. So in terms of, uh, which representative would be ideal to sit on the committee, it could go both ways. Um, as long as what's being discussed at the committee meetings is being brought back to council. That is pertinent because ultimately we need your support in order to implement the, the recommendations, the targets and thresholds of the actual plan itself.
Okay.
Yeah, just a question. So wa- was, um, the first draft, uh, sent to admin for our review?
Um, so it was sent, I believe, uh, Kayla, I don't know if you want to speak to it or not, but I believe, um, it was sent to,
It was either Esther, the CEO, or Kayla. I'm sorry, I don't know all the names, but I know the little contacts that I have.
Yeah, and that would have been, uh, roughly two weeks ago that we had sent it.
Okay. And were you expecting council to review that then, as a council, and then comment back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's a little bit difficult being that we do not have, uh, a representative on the, the committee itself, so.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thanks for doing my job.
Any questions?
Yeah, any other questions? Yeah, seeing none, thank you. Well, we have to appoint someone. I think a council member would be appropriate.
Probably doesn't matter. There's about a year left, apparently, so I mean, if they, if all settle on that committee.
Right. You're volunteering?
Sure.
Well, I'll make the motion that the council points, Council Swiger.
Unless somebody else wants it then?
Deputy Reeve Swiger, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion that council points Deputy Reeve Dana Swiger to the Lakeland Industry and Community Associating Watershed Management Plan Committee effective immediately for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two term. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to break for, uh, lunch.